Welcome everyone to tonight's Ordinary Council meeting. I am the Mayor, councillor Georgina Papafoudeo. I declare this meeting open at 7pm. I would like to extend a warm welcome to members of the public who are viewing at home. Due to the declaration of state of disaster in Victoria and introduction of stage four restrictions, councillors will be attending this Ordinary Council meeting by electronic means. This meeting is deemed to open to the public via an online livestream available through council's website. An audio and video recording of the meeting will be published on council's website after the meeting. The application used to livestream this meeting requires details on registration. However, these details are hidden from all other attendees at the meeting. Members of the public will not be recorded in this process and Brimbank City Council does not record this information. Item one, opening, please stand for the acknowledgement of country. On behalf of Brimbank City Council, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, the Warangiri people, and pay our respects to elders past, present and emerging. I ask councillors to remain standing for the council commitment, others may be seated. As the council, we will act in the best interest of the Brimbank community and consider the immediate and long term impacts of our decisions. We will make these decisions fairly and without bias. We will uphold all of our obligations under the Lords of Victoria and council's local laws and will act in accordance with our councillor code of conduct. Thank you councillors, may be seated. Item three, I note that councillor Tarkos has submitted an apology. Item four, disclosure of conflicts of interest. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest councillors? Councillor Farm?
Yes, Plaid Mayor, I would like to declare the indirect conflict for item 12.5A and 12.18 and then conflict for 12.1.
So I'll just repeat those councillor Farm?
So I would like to declare the conflict of interest for item 12.1 and indirect conflict of interest for item 12.5A and item 12.18.
Thank you. Right, are there any other conflicts of interest? No, thank you. All right, designation of items as confidential. There are 11 items to be designated as confidential this evening. May I have a mover of a motion to designate the items that are confidential? Councillor Goodie-Chair?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the recommendation as printed in the business papers.
Do I have a seconda? Councillor David? I'll put the motion to a vote, all those in favour? Against, Carrie, thank you. Item 5A, error in agenda regarding item 14.2. Councillors, I have been advised by the Director for Advocacy, Partnerships and Community that item 14.2 was included in the agenda erroneously and the councillor who lodged that revision motion did not wish for it to be included in the agenda papers. We will not be considering item 14.2 and the director has advised me that it will be corrected in the minutes for this meeting. Thank you. Item six, confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. There are minutes of previous meetings to be confirmed this evening. May I have a mover of a motion to confirm these minutes? Councillor Borg?
I would like to move a motion that council confirms the minutes of Ordinary Council meeting number 576 held on the 21st of July 2020.
Thank you councillor Borg, do I have a seconda? Councillor Aziz? I'll put the motion to a vote, all those in favour? Against, Carrie, thank you. Condolences, there are two items of condolence this evening. The first one, 7.1, is the passing of Andy Kratzis. Councillors, I would like to move a motion for council to extend their condolences on the passing of Andy Kratzis. I would normally vacate the chair in order to move a motion but given we are conducting this meeting virtually due to COVID, it is too technically difficult to do so. I wish to move a motion that council notes the passing of Andy Kratzis and extends condolences to his family, including his wife, Miss Athena Kratzis and her two sons. The motion that council notes the passing of Miss Andreas Kratzis and extends condolences to his family, including his wife, Miss Athena Kratzis and their two sons. Do I have a seconda for this? Councillor Sam, David, thank you. Okay. Last month, the Brimbank Greek community farewellled a highly committed volunteer, a Greek Egyptian community member, Andy Kratzis, who lived in St Albans and Kielord Downs for approximately 65 years. Andy was born in Egypt in 1944, both his parents were born in Greece. Andy arrived in Australia in 1955 and attended Albion Primary School. In 1956, Andy commenced school at St Albans High School and was appointed the first bell monitor with Geoff Barlow. The school was like a new family to him with only 150 students enrolled. In 1973, whilst on holidays in Greece, he met Athena. They both came to Australia, got married and had two sons, Stephen and Chris. During his years, Andy worked at the Bank of New South Wales in Old Frida Street, St Albans, at Hardy Rubber, Ajax Pumps and Macy Ferguson. Andy's commitment and dedication to the community is recognised by many. In 1993, Andy was acknowledged for his community work by being named Citizen of the Year by the Kielord Council. Over the years, Andy has held community positions such as President of Sunshine Park Estate Kindergarten, President of the St Albans Heights Primary School Council, President of Kielord Downs Secondary College School Association, President of the Greek Orthodox Community of St Albans, President of St Albans Secondary College School Council and also President of the Greek Orthodox Archydices of Australia Parish of St Albans. Andy was a leader who had an approach to assist the community where possible. He made a difference in our community and I deeply thank Andy for all his hard work. Brimbank City Council sends their deepest condolences to his wife Athena, his son Stephen and Chris, his three grandchildren Andreas, Helena and George and all his other family members and friends. May he rest in peace. Now I would like to say some words in Greek. Okay, any other councillor like to speak? Councillor Sam David? We can't hear you councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just very briefly. Andy was known to all the corners of Brimbank, we call today, but especially St Albans, Kielord and the surrounding areas. A great volunteer over the years and we very sadly miss. God bless you Andrew.
Thank you councillor David. Okay, I'll put the motion to a vote, all those in favour? Against, Carrie, thank you. 7.2, we've got the passing of Claire Brennan. May I have a mover of the motion for council to extend their condolences on the passing of Claire Brennan? Councillor Goodie-Chair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish to move the motion that council notes the passing of Claire Brennan and extends condolences to her family.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Borg? Okay, would the mover like to make a few comments?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The city of Brimbank, Madam Mayor, has lost one of its most active and hardworking citizens, Claire Brennan, who died on the 31st of July 2020, aged 82 years. An Auburn Vale resident, Claire came to live in the area 48 years ago when it was just a new suburb. She played a key role in setting up the Auburn Vale Residents' Association in starting a playgroup and in the local neighbourhood watch. She lobbied the EPA about local environmental issues and with her late husband Des contributed to Resurrection Catholic Parish, St Albans. In the 1990s, Claire was a key member of the Local Residents' Action Committee that worked with government bodies to transfer the Albion explosive factory into the new suburb of Cairnleigh. In recognition of her work, she had a street named after her, Claire Brennan Drive, Cairnleigh. A former Sunshine councillor, she took a keen interest in local issues. In 2001, she was amongst those who campaigned vigorously to save the black powder mill from demolition. Claire was passionate about the black powder mill. According to her daughter Carolyn Turner, she recognised the mill's important heritage and its value as a reminder of the extensive munitions industry, formerly in Melbourne's West and the thousands who worked in that industry. She was a founding member of the Friends of the Black Powder Mill, serving as Vice President for many years and President from 2017 to 2020. She supported all the black powder mill open days and represented the group at Brimbank City Council's Volunteers' Dinner late in 2019. For years, Claire dreamed about writing a story for children about the mill in a simple humorous way. Her dream did come true, following a grant from Brimbank City Council towards publication by Friends of the Black Powder Mill. Her easy to read book, A Little Black Powder Mill on the Grasslands of Cairnleigh, beautifully illustrated by artist Meredith Thomas, appeared in 2015. Local schools and libraries received complimentary copies. Despite health and mobility problems, Claire still kept active in relation to Friends of the Black Powder Mill. Her last official duty was to chair a committee meeting by Zoom just now, a few months ago, Madam Mayor, in June 2020. Claire loved and was loved by her family and her community. A brave, generous and lively person with an indomitable spirit, she will be greatly missed. She leaves six children, 10 grandchildren and one great grandchild. May she rest in peace.
Thank you councillor Goodie-Chair. Councillor Borg, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. I have known Claire since I have been a councillor. Indeed, she was one of the first people who approached me to congratulate me when I was elected. Since then, I got to know her more as we used to spend a lot of time together on open days of the black powder mill. She was very passionate about it, as she was on any other initiative that she took in her stride. I also had the pleasure to speak to Claire only two weeks before her passing and it was great to catch up with her after some time. I would like to pass on my condolences to the family and friends.
Thank you councillor Borg. Any other speakers? Councillor Hiddich?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to say a few words about Claire and echo the words that have been said by councillors Goodie-Chai and Borg. Claire was a special person, she was a real community person and she had a presence and a lot of fun in her and it was always good to be around her, to speak to her, to hear her views and to understand what was going on in her community because she knew. Claire was a community activist come councillor. She was always active in the community as a councillor as well. She had that spirit in her that drew people to her. She had the ability to mobilise people and resources to make changes happen and make good things happen for the community and she will be sadly sadly missed. I think the ongoing memory I have is Claire really standing there and standing up for her community time and time again. So I'll remember Claire that way, but I'll also remember her as a kind, loving and fun person. Was proud of her family, proud of her community and proud of the things she did. May she rest in peace.
Thank you councillor Hiddich. Any other speakers? Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, again, just a couple of words to say, he was missed. Claire was always knew the area of Auburn Vale and she always wanted to be called as the Mayor of Auburn Vale. She was, she was calling Marion Martin, the Mayor of Sunshine then, as the Mayor of Deer Park, but she was the Mayor of Auburn Vale. A smile over the years and we spoke about Margaret just before councillor Judy Chee had spoken about the black powder mills. We had about seven of those in that area currently. They stayed there at the time and they started demolishing one by one. And she alerted us, she was clear that the letters at the time and Margaret councillor Judy Chee, remember? We saved that black powder mill that is there today and what a wonderful job. God bless you Claire, thank you.
Thank you councillor David, any other speakers? All right, I'll put the motion to a vote, all those in favour? Against, Carrie, thank you. Okay, congratulations. There are three items of congratulations this evening. 8.1, Susan Grace Benny Award, 2020 National Awards for Local Government. May I have a mover of a motion of congratulations to council officers on winning the 2020 National Awards for Local Government, Susan Gray Benny Award for the First Nations Women's Leadership Programme and also the Brimbank Muslim Women's Leadership Programme. Daniel Allen?
Councillor? Yep, as printed in the business papers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, do I have a seconda? Councillor Goodie-Chair? Okay. Councillor Allen, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of council, I'd like to congratulate the council officers on winning the 2020 First Nation, sorry, 2020 National Awards for Local Government, Susan Grace Benny Award for the First Nation Women's Leadership Programme and the Brimbank Muslim Women's Leadership Programme. The Brimbank First Nation Women's Leadership Programme Through Art and the Brimbank Muslim Women's Leadership Programs were delivered in 2019. The programs were part of a broader Brimbank council leadership program that always aims to facilitate and increase levels of community participation and leadership. The Brimbank Muslim Leadership Program was developed following my 2018 notice of motion to continue to strengthen multiculturalism and address racial prejudice, which was put together with the help of my wife and sister-in-law in the wake of the racist Fraser Annings speech. The programs provided Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander and Muslim women an opportunity to strengthen the community through leadership skills such as increasing the understanding of local government setup, recognizing women as emerging and current leaders, promoting gender leadership roles for women in the community, providing opportunities for the First Nation and Muslim women to build on their existing leadership capacity, to connect with the community and strengthen council's cultural awareness of the communities. The Connected Communities Unit organised an art exhibition for the First Nation Women's Leadership Through Art Programme and also supported the Brimbank Muslim Women's Leadership Programme, the BRIM Active Community Project. Council celebrated and recognised the achievements and acknowledged the participants of Brimbank leadership and governance at the end of 2019 event by presenting achievement certificates. So thank you very much to all that were involved in putting this together and making it possible.
Thank you councillor Allen. Councillor Goodie-Chair? Would you like to say a few words? We can't hear you.
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, thank you. Thank you councillor Allen for that very good rendition of what happened, it was amazing. I know that yourself councillor Borg and myself were fortunate to attend part of that program and I wish to congratulate everyone who delivered that program, but especially the women that came out and were part of that program. The leadership program here, the women's leadership program here in Brimbank is absolutely amazing. And to any of the residents listening out there tonight, please take part because you will learn so much and it will prepare you for community life. So congratulations to all these women and may their futures be strong and may their futures always be community minded as well, thank you.
Thank you councillor Goodie-Chair. Any other councillors that would like to say some words? Councillor Borg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, once again, I would also like to congratulate the council officers on winning this award. I did have the pleasure, as councillor Judy Chee mentioned, to meet these women and I can say the smiles on their faces said it all and certainly worthwhile in more ways than one and I do encourage other women to take part in similar programs. Thank you once again, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations to all involved. I will now put the motion to a vote, all those in favour? Against, Carrie, thank you. Next one I've got is 8.2, Sunshine Salvation Army. May I have a mover of a motion of congratulations to the Sunshine Salvation Army for the support of the Brimbank community during the COVID-19 pandemic? Councillor Arm? Dwi Arm?
Yes, Mayor, I would ask from councillor Tarkos to pass on her congratulation motion to the Sunshine Salvation Army that I would like to move the motion that council congratulate the Sunshine Salvation Army for their support of the Brimbank community during the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you.
Do I have a seconda? Councillor Hiddich? Would the mover like to speak?
Yes, Plaid, Madam Mayor. On behalf of council, I wish to congratulate Sunshine Salvation Army for their support of the Brimbank community during the COVID-19 pandemic. Sunshine Salvation Army have been providing support throughout COVID-19 by providing the Brimbank community with the quality takeaway meals from Alex Macs Meal, including many donated foods from Emirates First Class and the cloth frame mat from Miss Hua Li from the Sunflower Charity Group, sorry. These are in line with the five kilometre state four restricted radius in our community. I would like to express my thanks to the Sunshine Salvation Army for their support of our community at times of crisis, thank you.
Thank you councillor Farm. Councillor Hiddich, would you like to say a few words?
I would, Madam Mayor, and I'd also like to foreshadow a couple of other congratulations that I'd like to make as well. In regards to Sunshine Salvation Army, they are absolutely doing a fabulous job looking after the most vulnerable in our community. They do it every Friday night, but they're also doing a heckuva lot in these COVID times. I echo the words of councillor Farm and I congratulate the Salvation Army here locally for all the work they're doing. They complement the work of council, they provide a whole lot of service to community that's over and above what most of the community would know about. I thank them for their work.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Trum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I also would like to congratulate on Sunshine Salvation Army. It's all the hard work they're doing for the community. It's not only provide the takeaway food but also show how they support the member in the community who need help. I did get involved a couple of times to deliver the food and explain if they not only help the people from Brimbank but also if I know someone from our area of Brimbank they willing to refer or to contact someone outside to support and help all people needed. So one again, congratulations, thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? I'd just like to say thank you as well. Your work and contribution for our community is definitely recognized, so thank you. All right, I will put that to a vote, all those in favour? Against, Carrie, thank you. The next congratulations item is 8.3, the St Albans Community Youth Club. May I have a mover of a motion of congratulations to the St Albans Community Youth Club for supporting those in need in the St Albans and Greater Brimbank areas by outreach support during the COVID-19 pandemic by providing food hampers through contactless pickup. Victoria Borg, you're moving this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of councillor Tarkos, I would like to move the motion that council congratulates St Albans Community Youth Club for supporting those in need in this St Albans and Greater Brimbank areas via outreach support during the COVID-19 pandemic by providing food hampers through contactless pickup.
Thank you councillor Borg, do I have a seconda for this one? Councillor Dwi Arm? Okay, would the mover like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of council, I would like to congratulate St Albans Community Youth Club for supporting those in need in this St Albans and Greater Brimbank areas via the outreach support during the COVID pandemic 19 by providing food hampers through contactless pickup. Under stage four restrictions, St Albans Youth Club will continue to provide food hampers by pickup appointment to those in need. Food hampers are available for contactless collection on Tuesdays between 10am and 12 noon by appointment only. Call 93664302, leave your name and number and we will call to arrange an appointment. Thank you for your patience and understanding. We are all in this together and we will get through this together. I wish for council to formally recognise and acknowledge their efforts and the contribution they have made in assisting the spread of COVID-19.
Thank you councillor Borg. Councillor Farm? I invite you to speak to this motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like just to express in addition to what councillor Borg was saying, I just want to say that what is the kind hurt action that being provided at this time for community? I know that St Albans Community Youth Club have been doing all this sort of work throughout the year, not just at this time of the crisis, but whatever they're doing now are highly significant needs to provide help for people that, you know, deeply in this terrible crisis, thank you.
Thank you councillor Farm, do I have any other speakers? Okay, excellent contribution, thank you for all your hard work. I'll put this motion to a vote now, all those in favour? Against, Carrie, thank you. Now councillor Hiddich, I believe you've got a couple of congratulations as well? I can't hear you.
Sorry, I do, Madam Mayor, yes. The first one is on behalf of councillor Tarkos, it's Duke Street Community House and I would like to, on behalf of council, move a motion to to congratulate Duke Street Community House for supporting those most vulnerable in our community with meals, material support.
Is that your motion?
Yes, yes. Material support and also childcare in this most difficult of times.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this motion? Councillor Farm, thank you. Councillor Headitch, now, could you say a few words to the?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Yes, look, Duke Street Community House has been doing a fabulous job during the COVID crisis. It's been there, it's been open, there's been vulnerable families dropping in all the time to receive support, whatever it might be. And the house has been closed, has closed its childcare just recently, but is about to reopen again with the changing of the regulations and so on. And it will again be opening, opening its doors up to the most vulnerable families around the area. These community houses play a fabulous role at all times, but particularly in times of crisis like these. So, I think on behalf of council, we should be extending our warmest congratulations to them for all the great work they're doing.
Thank you councillor Headitch. Councillor Farm, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, with all other community centre that being providing all the services in this difficult time is very appreciated. And I think, you know, not just about whatever the material that people getting from these community centre, but the feeling and the mental support as well, when they receive it is quite significant as well. So, thank you for all the hard work that all these people in this community are offering to our community.
Thanks. Thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Trum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yet I would like to congratulate the youth community house. It's all the hard work and it to show a lot of support for the board member for the community. A lot of service they provide to different ethnic community, different service provide to the young parent or the childcare in this or IT language. And also, I know now they have the food bank for the people in around who need it, so can come and collect it. And I think they also do it, people need to delivery, so they still support and help. And I think the people, the member in the community, very proud about all the service and all the hard work from the member and the board member it to do and to show how they support during the difficult COVID-19 for the member in the community. So, congratulations for all of them and who get involved in to support the community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Trum. Councillor Goodie-Chair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I also join the other councillors in congratulating the Duke Street Community House? It is indeed a wonderful community house. I've visited it several times. Obviously, now we can't visit the community house, but they do offer a range of services. And under these unprecedented circumstances, they would be finding it hard to deliver some of the services, but they are soldiering on. And may I also suggest, Madam Mayor, that we joining congratulating also our other neighbourhood houses who are also doing a tremendous job in servicing the community and guiding and advising our community also in these very, very difficult times. So, all of the people, the volunteers, and even, even the people who are paid, it doesn't matter, they're finding it very hard to do their job at the moment. So, I would like to also add that we congratulate all of the community houses here in Brimbank.
Thank you councillor Goodie-Chair. Okay, I'll put the motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Harry, thank you. Councillor Headitch, did you have one more or was that combined? I can't hear you.
Yep, sorry. I, I had the Corroy Creek Neighbourhood House in Albion as well, along similar lines, that we move a motion to congratulate them, the house, for all the work that it's doing on behalf of community during these COVID times.
Okay, do I have a second for this motion? Councillor Trum, thank you. Councillor Headitch, would you like to say some words, please?
I'd like to echo the same sort of words that I said for Duke Street, except that at Corroy Creek Neighbourhood House, they've really got themselves well and truly organised up there. They're, they're flying. They've got a very active group who are supporting people around that local area actively, who are most, the people who are most in need. And they're providing also meals and other support services into the community, which does a lot to improve mental health and to improve connection. And I think just to improve that, that whole sense of community and to retain it while we're all locked away at the moment. So, I won't go on any further, but I just wanted to say that we acknowledge the fabulous work that these neighbourhood houses do, and that we offer our congratulations to them at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you councillor Headitch. Councillor Trum? Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to congratulate all the active, all the hard work, all the service they provide for the community. And I think we really miss someone like this to doing for our community. And during the COVID-19, that's the service, the care they provide for the community, especially for him. For our, so I think it, we should recognise and congratulation for all their service. And the people, the neighbour, the neighbour is on task area, they should very proud all the active people doing hard work for our community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Trum. Any other speakers? I just want to say congratulations to all five of our neighbourhood houses in Brimbank. They do a marvellous job and provide many, many services for our community. So, thank you. All right. I'll put that to a motion. All those in favour? Against? Okay, carried. And I just note councillor Margaret Goodie-Chair has left the meeting. So, when she returns, she will need to identify herself. Okay. Item nine, public question time. We've now reached the part of the meeting for public questions. As communicated through our website and to individual questionnaires, all questions received by council before 12 noon that comply with our meeting procedure will be read out and answered at this meeting, and will also receive a written response. Mr Sakurai, I hope you can hear me?
Yes, madam.
I understand, I understand we have received questions from the public this evening.
Yes, madam mayor. We've received a number of questions. The first question is from Rhonda Peterson, who asks, my question relates to the silo in Sunshine, which I've just heard that Grain Corp are preparing to sell.
Councillor Sakurai, do you mind stopping there? We need councillor, the councillor that's just walked in to identify herself.
Councillor Margaret Judy-Chair?
Thank you councillors. Could you please indicate whether you can hear and see councillor Goodie-Chair?
My apologies, Madam Mayor. I had to upset myself for a moment.
That's fine. Thank you. Apologies. Mr Sakurai?
Yes, madam mayor. Rhonda Peterson asks, my question relates to the silo in Sunshine, which I've just heard that Grain Corp are preparing to sell. Can I ask, given the significance to the history of the silos and the wheat belt in Victoria to Sunshine and the McKay Harvester, have these silos got a heritage overlay so that they cannot be pulled down? And if they don't already have a heritage listing, is council prepared to apply for one?
Okay, thank you. The Sunshine Silos at two Right Street Sunshine are currently not protected by heritage overlay. In order to apply for a heritage listing, an assessment would need to be completed to determine if they have heritage values and determine whether planning controls should be considered to protect the site. At this stage, this work has not been completed due to the COVID-19 restrictions, which has prevented us from accessing public records. Therefore, council has not been in a position to formally apply for heritage controls for the Sunshine Silo site. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, the next question is from Susan Jenison, who asks, there are no cleaning services being undertaken in Kielo Village. We know that there were contractors of the Department of Health, but as the drive-through COVID-19 testing in Kielo Community Hub is still in place, members feel it is remiss not to have the street cleaning that's wiping around rubbish bins, lamp poles and bus stop shelters, for instance. The important question is why aren't council promoting this contract still to be upheld?
Thank you for your question, Susan. The cleaning service has been undertaken in the Kielo Village was part of a short-term state government initiative entitled Community Cleaning Blitz for a four-week period to help build community confidence as the stage lifting of COVID-19 restrictions began back in June. Council's, council was recently successful in its working for Victoria application, which included a cleaning initiative. However, given stage four restrictions, the new cleaning and other funded community focused services will not commence until the current restrictions are lifted. Council continues to provide essential cleaning services throughout the municipality, including the Kielo Village, during this health emergency through the following services.
Next question, Madam Mayor, is from Natalie Eddy, who writes, I would like to know why maintenance along Gurnung Drive Kenley has dropped off. When handover happened more than 11 years ago, there would be a park screw who would mow and brush cut every eight weeks. Then five years ago, this all stopped. During this time, a park screw would only come out when I request it would be done, as weeds and long grass were over 1.5 metres tall. My last request, I was told that this is not a parks area. Who is now responsible? How has it been with parks for 12-plus years and now no longer? When will proper maintenance or a maintenance programme being reinstated with regular brush cutting? The plants cannot thrive when you allow weeds to grow so big and then come in and spray them with weed killer. This area should be beautified, looked after and protected. Corroy Road Creek is a huge asset to Brimbank, and the path on either side along it should be well kept and maintained.
Thank you. We understand your question refers to a small section of land on the corner of Creekview Drive and Gurnung Drive Kenley, which is located between areas managed by council's Parks Department and the Environment Department. Officers have reviewed the maintenance of the small section of land on the corner of Creekview Drive and Gurnung Drive Kenley, and it will be referred to the Environment Department or Management on a maintenance schedule that encourages biodiversity. Thank you.
Gary Egan has two questions. The Friends of Sidon Park understands that the home of Matilda's proposal submitted by the Brimbank Council has great potential to catalyse sustainable development and activation of the Sidon Park precinct. Are there any recreational facilities within Brimbank that have preferential access for female teams? The second question is, the Friends of Sidon Park understands that the home of Matilda's proposal submitted by the Brimbank Council seeks to integrate support and align with local community clubs, particularly for women and girls soccer clubs from across the western region. Is the council advocating for shared preferential or exclusive usage of the facilities for female sporting teams?
Thank you, Gary, for your questions. Council encourages female participation at all sporting facilities across Brimbank, starting supported by inclusive design of new and upgrade of existing facilities in addition. Sorry, design of new and upgrade of existing facilities. In addition, council strongly outlines our expectations with sports clubs to provide female participation opportunities. Council does not have any female-only venues and instead focuses on inclusion for all. Question two, all new sports facilities are subject to an expression of interest process in which the sports club, which best meets the established criteria for the facility, is awarded the future tenancy of that facility. This includes a focus on inclusion and participation for all. Further consideration is required of the usage of any facilities at Sidon Park should the home of football be successful. Thank you.
Susan Jenison, on behalf of the Kielo Residents and Ratepayers Association, asks, this query is to Brimbank Council regarding public health measures and the Victoria Hotel Quarantine Inquiry. It has been recorded that private security employees who had tested positive had gone back to their homes in the northwestern suburbs of Melbourne. Did the local government area of Brimbank get notified by the Department of Health that these individuals had tested positive and were coming back into their communities? The question is important, as Brimbank records one of the highest numbers of coronavirus cases in Metropole and Melbourne still.
Thank you. Brimbank City Council were not notified of where positive individual cases were and where they resided in the municipality. The Victorian Department of Human and Health and Human Services infection control team leads investigations involving COVID-19 clusters and individual positive cases. We understand the confidentiality nature of individual health information, and were provided de-identify LGA and postcode data when it was made public.
Penelope Webb asks, even though compliance with environmental protections is a legal obligation, and even though remnants of native vegetation at 274 Forest Street, Adia, has been surveyed and found to be specifically protected by federal legislation, the destruction of this socially and environmentally significant green space has been planned by Brimbank since 12 September 2015, when it adopted the master plan of the Adia Green Activity Hub cycle sports complex. Given this concept remains unfunded, I ask the council to show why the master plan of the Adia Green Activity Hub 2015 should not now be declared null and void.
Thank you, Penelope. As you detail, council adopted the Adia Green Activity Hub master plan in 2015 to deliver a combination of environmental benefits through increased biodiversity and the removal of weed species, and to create positive health outcomes through the provision of cycling infrastructure. Given the recent announcement by the state government of the fast-tracking of the removal of the Fitzgerald Road level crossing and the release of the concept plan to deliver the level crossing removal, a review of the initiative will be required and will be subject of a future report to council.
Madam Mayor, Penelope Webb's second question is, planning protections that apply to 274 Forest Street, including zoning for public park and recreation, PPRZ, environmental significance, ES04 Aboriginal and Settler Culture Heritage, and its connection to the Corroy Creek biodiversity corridor. These are all overridden when Brimbank adopted design principles to facilitate the building by the level crossing removal project of road loop across 274 Forest Street and a road ramp and bridge between Forest Street and Fitzgerald Road where Sunshine. Given Brimbank's declaration of the need for urgent and meaningful action on climate change, what metric was used to calculate the effect of this loss, of the loss of this green buffer between Adia residents and the Western Ring Road? Please include estimated increase in carbon emissions with many tens of thousands of cars and trucks a day across what is now a grassland, the loss of mature trees, the increasing island effect of hard surfaces, increase in noise, increase in ambient light at night, loss of amenity and fragmentation of the landscape.
Council is supportive of the state government-led improvements to this transport network, including removal of the three-level crossings along the Deer Park Rail Corridor. Our adopted urban design principles for the Deer Park Rail Corridor seek positive urban design outcomes from these projects. And we'll, and we will advocate for positive environmental, social, cultural and amenity outcomes. As the concept plan for the Fitzgerald Road Level Crossing Removal Project has only recently been released, a full assessment of the impacts on council land has not been completed. It is recommended, you refer your question in relation to the metrics to calculate carbon emissions generated by the transport sector to the state government who are best placed to respond. Council will continue to advocate for a cleaner transport sector. Thank you.
Madam?
Sorry?
Sorry, Madam Mayor. Richard Cardhugh asks, I have recently been stood down from my employment due to stage four COVID-19 restrictions. Do Brimbank city councillors get paid if they do not participate? Do Brimbank City councillors get paid if they do not participate in scheduled council meetings?
Thank you for your question, Richard, and I am sorry to hear that you have been stood down from work. I hope that you will be back soon and without too much hardship. In relation to your specific question, the Local Government Act provides for a councillor to receive their allowance while they are performing their duties as an elected official. A councillor who does not attend a meeting will receive the allowance for that meeting. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we've received questions from Mr Styles and Ms Wells in respect of similar matters, so I might join them together for you. First question from Mr Styles. I've been a sex worker for five years and regularly travel to Brimbank City Council to see my regular clients. How many sex workers who live or work in Brimbank did council speak to or consult with before finalising a submission to the State Review to Decriminalise Sex Work in Victoria? Second question also from Mr Styles is, council's submission to the State Review to Decriminalise Sex Work in Victoria Education refers to education and access to support networks for sex workers. Will council consider making a modest donation to a registered not-for-profit sex worker support group that operates in the city of Brimbank? And the next question from Ms Wells, regarding the council's proposed submission on the Victorian Review to Decriminalise Sex Work, were any sex workers or sex worker industry slash advocacy groups consulted in preparing this submission?
Thank you. Once council became aware that a review was being undertaken, the relatively short timeframe in which to provide a submission meant there was insufficient time for council to consult with any sex workers, industry or advocacy groups on this matter. The submission is based on Brimbank's recent experience in dealing with alleged illegal brothels and feedback received from our community through this experience. In relation to question two, council's community grant programme is available for eligible organisations to apply and provides financial support to not-for-profit organisations and community groups. We will provide details of how you can apply. In respect of the consultation question, once council became aware that a review was being undertaken, the relatively short timeframe in which to provide a submission meant there was insufficient time for council to consult with any sex worker, industry or advocacy groups on this matter. The submission is based on Brimbank's recent experience in dealing with alleged illegal brothels and feedback received from our community through this experience. I just want to note that this topic is also the subject to an officer report to council later on this evening. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, two questions from Hannah Robertson. The first question, many in the community feel that Brimbank has been overlooked by state and federal governments with respect to funding for capital works projects, leaving ratepayers to foot the bill. Can council inform the community of all potential sources of external funding available to councils, capital works and other projects included in the current draft budget before them tonight, and assure the community that council has pursued all of them for the projects in the current revised budget? The second question is, there has also been some concern within the community about the proposed increases in rates and fees in the draft budget, particularly given how hard-hit Brimbank has been by the COVID crisis. Can council inform the community of whether our fees are they relatively low, high or comparable to those of other councils? And particularly to councils with a similar socio-economic profile?
Thank you for your questions, Hannah. The budget includes over $6 million in grants that have been confirmed. Council is always seeking grants from state and federal government when grant programmes open. An example of this is the recent announcement that council has received $4 million in funding for works at Moor Park in Sunshine as a result of recently announced stimulus funding. Council continues to seek funding for projects included in the budget or identified by council policy. In relation to question two, council regularly benchmarks our fees and charges against other council and the most recent benchmarking exercise showed that most fees and charges are on par or below those set by other like councils. Thank you. Before we continue, can I just extend time, councillors? I'll put that to a vote. All those in favour? Against Carrie? Thank you.
Next question from Dee Lim, Madam Mayor. I have been a sex worker in Melbourne for more than 20 years. I co-host Australia's only sex worker community radio show called Behind Closed Doors. Would a representative of council be willing to be interviewed on air about council's submission to the State Review to Decriminalise Sex Work in Victoria? And the second question is, is council aware that 20% of all sex workers in Victoria are men?
Thank you for your invitation for a council representative to speak on your radio programme. The invitation has been forwarded to our media and communications team for consideration and they will contact you shortly with a response. Question two, no, council was not aware of this figure and thanks you for bringing it to our attention.
Two questions from Stella Brown. In its submission to the State Review to Decriminalise Sex Work in Victoria, council does not support allowing sex workers to operate from dwellings in residential areas. Does council believe allowing one to two sex workers to operate from dwellings in residential areas will necessarily result in significant loss of amenity? And the second question, in its submission to the State Review to Decriminalise Sex Work in Victoria, council repeatedly refers to organised crime infiltrating illegal brothels. What is council relying upon in making this claim?
Thank you, Stella, for your questions. The submission is predominantly based on Brimbank's experience in dealing with alleged illegal brothels and feedback received from our community. Council has received numerous complaints of illegal brothels operating from residential homes over the last few years and has been successful in having a number of these premises prescribed. The complaints have primarily related to the impact on the amenity of surrounding residential properties. There are concerns that if there are no controls or regulations placed on home-based sex work, that this could impact the integrity and amenity of our residential neighbourhoods. It is acknowledged that not all sex work or sex work operations are run by organised crime and council does not suggest that they are. However, as part of council's enforcement of alleged illegal brothels, there have been experiences where these operations are being run by criminal operators. Council officers are in regular conversation with enforcement officers from other councils and the Victoria Police and these agencies have had similar experiences with sex work operations being infiltrated by organised crime groups. Thank you.
And the final two questions, Madam Mayor, from Anna Marich. Question one, in discussions with many other community members that I've spoken with, we believe that we have been misled in reference to the article that was published in The Age and Star Weekly, which was also put on social media, stating by an anonymous person that the mayor was being investigated for ordering council tacos to have a COVID-19 test immediately in Mr Council meeting. Is this true? Has this been investigated? And the second question is, the COVID pandemic has made restrictions on how people work. I know that many of us are doing virtual meetings from home. I assume that this applies to councillors too. I have noticed that Council of Virginia and John have attended one meeting in the last three to four months, but yet they both seem to be active on social media daily. Council of Virginia has mentioned to people in the community that she has commenced full-time work. As a ratepayer, I would like to know if councillors are getting paid if not attending the meetings? If yes, why?
Thank you for your questions. An article published in The Age on the 10th of June 2020 noted that Acting Chief Municipal Inspector Dr John Lynch confirmed the local government inspector was assessing the complaint regarding Brimbank Council. As yet, Brimbank City Council has no comment on this matter. However, I have commenced an internal process to deal with this matter. In relation to your question about allowances, the Local Government Act provides for a councillor to receive their allowance while they are performing their duties as an elected official. A councillor who does not attend a meeting will receive the allowance for that meeting. And just so I want to add, each councillor contributes in their own way. Thank you. And that's the end of our public question time. Thank you, councillors. Item 10 petitions, there are no petitions to be received this evening. Item 11, minutes and reports of special committees. There are no minutes or reports of special committees. Item 12, officer reports. There are 26 officer reports for consideration by council tonight. Councillors, due to time constraints, I will not be granting extensions of speaking times for this meeting and councillors are limited to two questions of clarification in relation to any motion. Thank you. Item 12.1, Brimbank Coronavirus Response and Recovery Strategy Progress Report. Councillors, I have a May's report to report on this item. The Brimbank whole of council COVID-19 response and recovery strategy has continued to guide councils evolving an unprecedented... work in supporting our community during the ongoing pandemic. Tonight's COVID strategy July update contains some key highlights, including over 340 COVID-19 financial hardship applications approved, securing $8 million through Working for Victoria to employ 165 local workers to deliver COVID initiatives, distribution of over 240 hampers to local vulnerable families, engaging 680 businesses through 20 online webinars, reaching over 11,200 homes through online environment and sustainability programmes, community care providing over 1,200 hours of social support and 320 hours of assisted shopping to vulnerable residents, continued expansion and delivery of new and innovative council programmes, initiatives and essential services. I commend council's executive staff and partners, including state government and DHHS, for their ongoing work, flexibility and understanding in delivering these and other services that may have become increasingly important for our community. But it is fair to say that when we first adopted our strategy at the special council meeting on the 6th of April, we would have hoped not to have been in this position come August. But unfortunately, here we are. Despite all of our collective best efforts, Brimbank has sadly remained at the epicentre of Victoria and Australia's COVID-19 crisis with ongoing high numbers of overall and active cases. The way the virus has continued to spread through our vulnerable and disadvantaged communities is unfair and unsustainable. Whilst the introduction of stage four restrictions were a vital and necessary step to help us mitigate and suppress the spread of the virus, we also know these measures will compound other existing health, wellbeing and socio-economic issues our community already experienced. That is why, along with commending tonight's COVID-19 council report to the chamber, I also acknowledge and foreshadow the chamber's consideration of a new 19-point action plan for COVID response and recovery that will help us seek a new and elevated response, support and assistance from government to tackle local COVID issues. I again thank councillors and staff for their work during this unprecedented period. Thank you. Okay, councillor Farm, I'm aware of your conflict of interest. I just wanted you to hear the report. So, thank you. You'll be put in the holding bay now.
Thank you.
Ms Dumble, have you got anything to add to this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider noting the progress that's been made towards implementation of the Brimbank Coronavirus Response Recovery Strategy for the reporting period of the 1st to the 31st of July 2020. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? I'll put this report forward to vote. All those in favour? Against Carrie? Thank you. Can call councillor Farm back, please, from the holding bay? There's no councillor there. Councillors, while we're waiting for councillor Farm, could I please have a mover for this report? I think we did that, we did. Yeah, it was already moved. Thank you. All those in... Oh, we've moved it. We've moved it. The councillor Farm's not there. Give her a call. Oh, here she is. Councillor, could you please identify yourself?
Councillor Yuen An Fan.
Councillors, did you hear? And can you see councillor Farm? Councillor Trum, can you? You're disappearing on me. Okay, thank you. Okay, item 12.2, Planning Activity Update and Delegate Decisions, July 2020. I ask, Mr Walsh, could you please present this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is to provide council with a monthly report on the status of planning, permit applications and trends in planning approvals in Brimbank and also to provide council with decisions made under delegated authority for the period of July 2020. Council's asked to note the activity as detailed in Attachment 1.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Lancashire, a seconder. Councillor Aziz. Put this motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against Carrie. Item 12.7, Application 7P745/2019, 24 Industrial Drive Sunshine West, the variation of Section 173 Agreement. Mr Walsh, could you please present this report?
Apologies. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is to provide council with an assessment of the application to amend the Section 173 Agreement registered on the title of the land at 24 Industrial Drive Sunshine West against the provisions of the Planning and Environment Act 1987. Officer recommendation is the council determines to amend the Section 173 Agreement to remove the requirements for a three-metre rear setback.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Lancashire.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Move the recommendation in the notice papers. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Sam David, would the mover like to speak to this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very briefly, this is a procedural matter because...
Very briefly, this is a procedural matter because there isn't delegation that covers agreements. Therefore, this must be decided by council. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the seconda like to speak to this report? Councillor David.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very briefly as well, I'm very satisfied with the report. I think is the way to go and I support the officers' report and decisions here. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers for this report? Okay, councillors, I'll put this report to a vote. Those all in favour? Against? Carrie. Councillors, I'm seeking for a five-minute adjournment. Could I please have a mover? Councillor Goodie-Chair, a seconda. Councillor Aziz, thank you. The meetings adjourned for five minutes.
Have a glass.
We'll need to go back to also 12.1. We didn't have a mover for that report, although it went to a vote. And we need to give people the opportunity to say, make some comments if they like. So, 12.1, the Brimbank Coronavirus Response and Recovery Strategy Progress Report. Councillor Farm, do you have a conflict of interest?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
We'll put you in the holding bay. Okay, the report was presented by Ms Dumble. Councillors, do you have any questions on that report? No, okay. Do I have a mover for that report? Councillor Goodie-Chair? A seconda? Councillor Aziz?
Madam Mayor, I'll move the recommendation as printed in the agenda papers.
Thank you for that, councillor Goodie-Chair. Seconded by councillor Aziz. Councillor Goodie-Chair?
I think, Madam Mayor, at this stage, you wrapped it up very well in your report and I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Goodie-Chair. Councillor Aziz? Now, any other councillors that would like to make comments? Councillor Headitch?
Just very briefly, Madam Mayor, following on from what you said. Brimbank is one of the nation's biggest hotspots and this disaster brings to the table mental health, physical health, economic, financial, social housing, disability, education and resilience issues galore. This community for years has had to respond and recover from all sorts of damage, but nothing like this. We do have a wonderful community that's down on its knees at the moment, but already it's fighting back and businesses and neighbourhood houses, as we heard before, and local people are doing all they can and all those kind things that people do do at times like this to bind community together as best we can. Tonight, I just wanted to say that that's going to be my focus during these COVID times and that when making decisions, that will be front of mind for me on everything we do from now on.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Do I have any other speakers? All right. I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carrie. Okay, could... We have councillor Farm, please return. Welcome back, councillor. Could you please identify yourself?
Councillor Yuen An Fan.
Thank you. Grab your cards, councillors. Did you hear and see her? Thank you. Okay, we'll go to item 12.4 Application to Amend Planning Permit, P425/2014, or 32 to 36 Sun Crescent Sunshine. Mr Walsh, could you please present that report? Thank you.
Certainly, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is to provide council with an assessment of the application to amend planning permit, B425, 2014, for multi-story mixed-use development of 32 to 36 Sun Crescent Sunshine. And the assessment is against the provisions of the Brimbank planning scheme. Officers recommend that council issues a notice of decision to amend the planning permit for the construction of a seven-storey building, including the use and development of 44 dwellings and the development of a residential hotel and two shops, with the reduction in the associated car parking requirements, subject to a range of conditions that are detailed at Attachment 6 to this report.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question for Director Walsh. I'm just wondering, when assessing this application, how council saw hotel guests walking into the Sunshine CBD to shop or for a meal safely? Was it by the station, the railway station? Or was it by Mackay Gardens Railway Bridge? I'm just wondering how access and accessibility was seen in this part of the activity centre?
So, the current arrangements for accessing the western side to the eastern side of the railway line presents three possible routes. One is through via the HV Mackay Memorial Gardens and over the pedestrian bridge. The other is over the Hampshire Road crossing and also across the Sunshine Station link as well.
Any other questions or points of clarification? Thank you, Mr Walsh. Do I have a mover for this item? Councillor Lankishir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the recommendation in the notice papers.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda? Councillor David? Would the mover like to make a comment on this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few words. The... Last week, we heard the applicant and an objector at the planning review panel. And we certainly appreciate the input the two of them made in putting forward their comments on the proposal. This, of course, as in the notice paper, is an old permit from 2014 that hasn't gone ahead and is now coming back due to modifications, which include a seven-storey building, a three-level basement car park, which is a change from the above-ground car park before, residential hotel with 88 rooms, two shops, and the building is being articulated, or as they call, stepped back. There's... One of the questions of interest that I had in it was that the, is this development going to go ahead? And how we could guarantee that? The applicant was very strongly putting the point that the owner, in particular the hotel component, were very keen to go ahead. So hopefully, we are looking at a development going ahead in Sunshine, which would be a significant job generator. This development will be good for the Sunshine CBD. The start of what we hope will be a building recovery in this area post-COVID-19. The design is interesting and of a high standard. And I would recommend this proposal to council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lankishir. Would the seconda like to speak to this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very briefly, I think councillor Lankishir already said it just beautifully. To me, this is one of many. And I hope in the near future, we see many of those hotels and other entertaining centres in Sunshine, and that's what we're expecting to see. This particular permit was issued about four or five years ago, or maybe more, I believe, in reference to apartments. Now, it was not... You got the permit for that. And I believe now it'd be much better for residents around the area to have the hotel instead of the apartments. As we know, 136 car spaces now that is provided. And most of us know that hotels, real hotels, they don't need... The constations or the people that come into those hotels, they're only for a short stay. And they must for... They won't have many cars to park overnight. So I reckon it's a wonderful gesture, wonderful welcome to see the best hotel and many, I hope, in the near future. I congratulate the report and I thank you for that, giving me the chance to say a few words, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor David. Are there any other councillors that would like to speak to this item? Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I wanted to add a few words. As I raised my question earlier, this particular facility, the residential hotel, is a facility that's much needed in Sunshine. The issue that I see it butting up against is it sits on the boundary of the activity centre and the boundary of the residential growth zone with the Sun Crescent and Graham Street residents living opposite. As I said, the residential hotel is much needed. But I think the impacts of the residential hotel on the surrounding area is something that council needs to manage very closely going forward. I also wonder about the safety issues for guests of the hotel wanting to go to Sunshine CBD. Walking across the overpass is the most dangerous thing you could do. There are no footpaths. There are no real safe ways to get across it. Across the railway line can be exceptionally dangerous as well. Through the railway station can be dangerous as well. And also through Mackay Gardens, particularly at night. So I guess community safety is a massive issue for this particular proposal going forward. And it's a massive issue for council in tidying up what we have as a major barrier between the main CBD and the Sun Crescent area. I feel for the residents of Graham Street and Sun Crescent and surrounding areas with the interface issues they'll face. I also think that there's an important issue around architectural design and landscaping design guidelines for streetscapes like this. We have seen, as councillor Lankishir said, some very good architecture put forward in this. But there is no guidance. We rely on the market to sort this out. And we all know what's going on with markets at the moment. We've got an aged care market that's failing. We've got various markets that are failing. Market failure is a common thing. And I think certainty with architectural guidelines and landscaping guidelines for the streetscape will make a real difference. We saw that in Canberra when councillor Tarkas, myself, former mayor, councillor Congreve, and the CEO went there and saw that they had these guidelines in place and what a difference it made. Created value and created amenity for that whole area. Developers wanted to build there because it was terrific and that sort of thing. So I make the point that we do need to do a lot more work to make, I guess, applications like these, when they're built, work well within our community, particularly this divided community of the Sunshine CBD. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have any other speakers for this item? Councillor Lankishir, you've got a right to respond. He moved it, councillor.
No, no further comments, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carrie, thank you. Okay. Item 12.5 is the final draft annual budget 2020-2021, including final draft long-term financial plan 2020 to 2030 and final draft rating strategy 2020 to 2021. Councillors, I note that councillor Farm has previously declared a conflict of interest in relation to report 12.5. Unless there are any objections, I propose that we consider motion A of Officer Report 12.5. We deal with that separately. So councillor Farm could go in the holding bay and then...
Sorry, Mayor, can I also... I just come to aware, maybe I would want to also group up 12.8 and C?
Could I please have on the screen the recommendation so I could have a look at it, please? All right, I'm fine with that. So...
Thank you.
Councillors, so what I'm proposing, that we consider motion A and C of the Officer Report 12.5 before dealing with the rest of the budget to allow councillor Farm to participate and debate in that final budget. All right, may I have a mover for this motion? Councillor Goodie-Chair? A seconda, please? Councillor Headitch, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I am moving it.
No, Madam Mayor. No, Madam.
Hang on a minute.
I didn't second... I didn't second, Madam Mayor. I was asking a clarification.
Okay, let's go back a step. Councillor Headitch, what's the clarification?
How can we separate these items? We have one of them around the rates and the other one around changes to the budget. I can't see how we separate these and deal with them separately. Have they joined?
Could we please have that recommendation back on the screen? The shared screen?
And Madam Mayor, may I clarify that I am moving an amended motion? And in my amended motion, parts A and C are the same?
I'm also moving it.
No, they're not, Madam Mayor.
I'm also proposing to move an amended motion, Madam Mayor.
Councillors?
Part C is different.
Just give me a minute to consult with governance. Thank you. Okay, thank you, councillors. You could have declared a conflict of interest for 12A, but not for C. We cannot split C up. Apparently, it's part of the whole budget. So councillor Farm, because you've declared a conflict of interest for C, now you will have to miss out on the whole budget item. So we will put you in the holding bay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, councillors. All right, so we'll go back to the report. Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Goodrich?
Madam Mayor, I have an amended motion, which I have previously circulated to councillors. And I wish to move that recommendation as printed on the screen.
Could we have that brought up, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Do I have a second for this amended motion? Councillor Aziz? Now this becomes the substantive motion, councillors. Okay, councillor Goodrich? Would you like to present your amended motion? Thank you.
I am speaking to my amended motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. So, Madam Mayor and councillors and everyone out there, as portfolio councillor for the Brimbank Innovation Portfolio, which does include financial stability, I'm very pleased to speak to the final draft annual budget 2021 report. The budget does reflect the community's input and it is for this reason that I have moved an amended motion tonight. I have been through many budgets and this is my 15th council budget. None has quite been challenging as this one. It is not the community who have made it challenging, but COVID-19. It is extraordinary that the budget has had to be delayed and it is also extraordinary that the budget has had to be reviewed and again and again. After the submissions, Madam Mayor, many answers became clear. It is with this in mind that I propose the zero rate rise so that residents may get some respite from the rising tide of bills, arbitrary payments, together with the simple things of putting things, food on the table, which may not be simple for a lot of people at this time, Madam Mayor. Of course, council will still continue to offer the hardship policy to anyone who is indeed finding it hard to pay the rates despite the 0% rate rise. Our businesses are suffering and therefore there is some respite for them in proposing a 15% waiver on the first three instalments of their rates notice. We have also recognised the unwavering work that our neighbourhood houses do and propose $10,000 more yearly for each of them. They have delivered excellent programmes in extraordinary circumstances. We have also recognised the need for the HFMK Gardens to also get an uplift by scoping some public art. To fund the zero rate rise and the other extras, I'm proposing that councillors endorse the deferral of the multi-deck car park in Sunshine to the tune of $5.4 million. That is not to say, and I wish the Sunshine business community to note, that the car park will not be built. It is simply that at this time it cannot be built as we are awaiting designs on the super hub, final plans for the Sunshine Priority Precinct and also the airport rail link. And of course, the opportunities which may arise out of Sunshine being the capital of the West. I have no doubt that the next council will be making a decision on the car park and that it will in fact be needed at some stage. However, for now, the community needs these funds, these urgent funds, and we have recognised this. I also wish to mention that the cycling and walking paths have also been considered. And after more advice, more work needs to be done in advocating and negotiating with private property owners and government agencies to be able to make the links which were spoken about in the submissions. Everything else in the Capital Works programme will remain the same and will be delivered. I especially want to mention the sporting clubs, playgrounds and parks, which to me should seem a logical thing to continue and not change as that infrastructure will be extremely important for our community to start readjusting post-COVID. I have no doubt that we will overcome this pandemic. It counts to be positive right now. As for the leisure centre in St Albans, I have every faith in its construction and that the facility will be first class in every way. There has never been a project which has been so closely scrutinised, not only by the community but by councillors. However, the contract has been awarded and any penalties, any penalties would cost lots of money. And I don't think that's a wise spend of ratepayers' money right now. We are living in extraordinary times, but we still need to be guided by our council plan, which the community contributed to. I have no doubt that the next council will also be looking at a new council plan and of course will have to make references.
30 seconds, councillor.
Thank you. In the meantime, this council has responded to community concerns and will continue to deliver services. And it's also refocusing on some priorities and supporting community through crisis delivers new priorities. In closing, I wish to thank the CEO and officers for their support and advice. I thank the community. I also thank my fellow councillors. I commend the budget and encourage my fellow councillors to support my amended motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Goodrich. Councillor Aziz, would you like to say a few words on this amended motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with my councillor Goodrich. The things that she's putting forward are really make sense to hold off on the car park with businesses not doing as well as it has been thanks to COVID-19. I don't think we need the car park as much as we need some of the the zero rise on the rates. So I think, you know, to put the car park back a little bit just till the next budget is a better thing to do. So thank you councillor Goodrich, that was a really good position and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, councillor Aziz. Do I have any other speakers for this? Councillor Headitch and councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to put forward or foreshadow an amended motion as well. I hear councillor Goodrich's comments. I hear what the community has said to council very, very, very loudly that business as usual isn't the go in this particular budget. We are in a crisis here in Brimbank. We are in a hotspot, one of the nation's biggest hotspots. And that that community transmission is not going to go away for quite some time and there will be ongoing effort needed to keep it low around here. So for me, I think the budget doesn't go far enough what councillor Goodrich is proposing. My proposal is that a 0% rate rise occur, that there be zero fees and charges rises and there be no 240 litre bin charge rise. The hardship policy is as per the council policy, that there is the waiver of 15% on business rates over the three, three particular payment periods. I also propose that the capital works get adjusted. This isn't business as usual. We have priorities that are coming out of capital works in sport and various other areas that are potential.
Okay. I can't.
Someone muted me.
Yep, sorry. Now, councillor Headitch, is this your motion for the foreshadowing?
No, I'm speaking about councillor Goodrich's motion and why, why I would like to, well, I think something different should be done as well.
Okay.
I'm speaking to her motion and saying that there are alternatives and I'm putting mine forward.
So is this your, are you putting in, are you putting forward?
I'm speaking against, I'm speaking against councillor.
You're against, that's all you're doing, you're.
That's what I'm doing at the moment, so I'm speaking against it.
All right, okay.
Thank you. So how much time have I got left?
Pardon? So apparently councillor Headitch, you cannot foreshadow an amendment. But you can make an amendment to the amendment.
Right. Well, I'll foreshadow an amendment to the amendment, Madam Mayor, if that's possible.
You can't foreshadow, but you can make an amendment to councillor Goodrich's new substantive motion.
Thank you. I'd like to do that. I'd like to make an amendment to councillor Goodrich's.
Could we, could we have councillor Goodrich's motion back on the screen, please? And you tell me what you'd like to amend.
I'd like to amend.
Wait until it's on the screen, please. Shared screen, please.
I think we have the same residential house rates through to municipal charge. And we, we have a difference in the 240 litre bin charge. It goes to 640.77, the 240 litre. Two more down. Yep, it goes to $640.77. After the third dot point in C, at the end of, in turnover of, after in turnover of 30% or more, we put in the comment noting a 0% increase has been applied to rates and the 240 litre environmental charge makes the following changes.
Just a little bit slower, please councillor Headitch.
I'm sorry, there's a, there's a version of this with the officers.
But we're making the amendment live on screen?
Yeah. Then there's a table that the officers have.
A table? Where does a table get?
It gets put in after noting the the noting becomes a, not a subset of the waiver, but a dot point in itself.
So, sorry, back. Before D, just before D?
No. So, yes, so that table pops in. And in it needs to go, because councillor Goodrich has moved the the deferring of the multi-deck car park, it needs to be added to it, minus 5.4 million.
Could, could I ask governance team, do they have a copy of your amended motion?
Yes, that's what they've got on the screen.
All right, that's the one on the screen, councillors. I'll give you a minute to have a good look at it.
This is Margaret's, isn't it?
No, it says on the top, hang on.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Headitch, yep.
So it changes the rates, the same as Margaret's, changes the 240 litre bin charge, changes fees and charges to zero, zero increase. It adds in a peer review of the Melbourne Airport Development Plan, in particular the research and literature used regarding the impacts of noise on community health and wellbeing. A $200,000 project that was identified by the officers. It includes the Stony Creek at Brimbank Master Plan. It includes the exclusion of some roads projects as per the community advice to council worth $2 million and an increase of $2 million therefore in the footpath replacement because of COVID times and the use of footpaths more than roads at the moment. It includes $1 million for shovel-ready projects and a pipeline of projects to be developed for small local town centres.
Okay. All right, councillors.
There's more to come.
Oh, there's.
It, it includes a consideration of slowing down a number of capital works because of the COVID emergency that's on at the moment, the impact that's having on capital works in the area and the ability of councillors to do, councils and contractors do their work. Proposing that we slow the, the building of the health, the St Albans Health and Wellbeing Hub and save $18 million in cash by closing it down and doing some COVID.
Councillor Headitch.
Investigations.
Just hold on, please. I've got two points of orders and I've got a question now. During an amendment being made, you can't put a question forward at this stage. What's the point of order, councillor Goodrich?
Madam Mayor, the point of order is on relevance. I'm seeking a clarification as my amendment was simply an amendment. Councillor Headitch's motion seems to be a completely different motion. It is substantially different from the original motion printed in the business papers. As I've said, mine is an amendment. I would consider that councillor Headitch's motion is substantially different. So it is really a whole new motion from what I, from what, that's my opinion. But can I please get a clarification?
Councillor Goodrich, I would have to agree with you there. I thought he was going to just.
Point of order.
Excuse me, councillor Headitch, I'm chairing here.
There's a governance team for.
I'm going to get some advice from the governance team. Okay, councillors. Having considered councillor John Headitch's significantly different motion, we will go back to councillor Goodrich's motion, put that to a vote. If that is lost, then councillor Headitch could present his notice of motion as an alternate. Okay? Now, this is the advice I've received from governance. What's the point of order, councillor Headitch?
Point of, point of order, Madam Mayor, is that this isn't substantially different. It has three elements. Rates, fees and charges and bin plus an adjustment of the capital works within the capital works.
Councillor Headitch, I've been informed there are many, many, it's substance significantly different, so.
It's within the budget package, Madam Mayor.
Go back to councillor Goodrich's.
It's within the budget package, Madam Mayor, what's been put forward. It's not going outside that.
I'm sorry, councillor Goodrich's amended motion has become the substantive motion. It, we will talk to that and then we will put it to a vote. If it's lost, you can put an amendment motion and we'll take it from there as an alternative.
Madam Mayor, I, I raised the point of order, Madam Mayor, and asked the governance team for advice that this, this amendment that I'm putting forward is no different to councillor Goodrich's in its structure. It has a rates component, it has a fees and charges component which adds to it. But it's, all the capital works things that I'm proposing are inside the capital works budget. $74 million, yeah, well inside it. They are for less than the 74 million.
Okay, and councillor Headitch, I've made a decision. I ruled on the point of order. We will go back to councillor Goodrich's amended motion, which is a substantive motion. Councillor Goodrich, would you like to say anything else before I put it forward to the other councillors? Sorry, we can't hear you.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I stand by my stance, Madam Mayor. An amendment is a very simple change. A substantive change is a completely different motion.
I agree. Thank you.
I understand councillor Headitch, but I'm. I understand councillor Headitch, but I'm sorry. That's the way that the meeting procedure is, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Are there any councillors that want to make a comment on councillor Goodrich's substantive notice of motion? Councillor Borg?
Thank you madam mayor. The delivery of the annual budget is always a highlight of council's commitments and these years is not different indeed. If anything, this budget is extra highlighted by the unprecedented and extraordinary circumstances of the COVID-19 pandemic. Significant changes had to be made considering the significance of the impacts in all the various sectors. It required the complete reprioritisation of council's internal and external activities. The zero increase across all properties is very welcomed. We have a highly disadvantaged community. The zero increase will help to minimise the financial stress that the majority of this community is experiencing. As councillors, we had robust discussions to consider the options that we had with regards to find ways to get the loss of income in order to continue with the planned projects in the capital works. Postponing the Brimbank Multi Deck Car Park Stage Two to a future budget is plausible to me. There are still lots of uncertainties with regards to the full impact of COVID-19 and this is taken into account with regards to this decision, so I do support the amended motion.
Councillor Headitch, I will give you one and a half minutes because you took up some time earlier to continue talking if you like.
I was, I was going along madam mayor because I thought that's what I was allowed to do and that's what the meeting allowed me to do, so I'd like to speak against the motion. But I'd also like, I'd like to make some suggestions that councillor Goodrich may like to take up in her amendment that might be.
You've got one and a half minutes councillor Headitch.
So I'd like to speak against the motion for not going far enough in these COVID times, that we, we still have a lot of business as usual in it. The things I'd like to suggest are the 240 litre bin charge be kept at the same level and the fees and charges be kept at the same level also. I'd also like to suggest that councillor Goodrich takes on board the peer review of the Melbourne Airport Development.
Hold on please councillor Allen, what's your point of order?
Thank you madam mayor, point of order constitutes a tedious repetition of something already said.
Thank you, taken. Councillor Lancashire, you had a point of order?
Thank you madam mayor. It sounded to me like there was argument there for the amended amendment to the amendment motion, which is irrelevant to the matter under consideration. That's my point of order.
Okay councillor Headitch, do you have anything new to argue against this notice of motion?
Madam mayor, I'm, I'm arguing against it, but I'm asking councillor Goodrich to consider.
No, no, you just, you, you just give your opinion on this notice of motion.
I'm arguing against it because it doesn't go far enough, that we are in times where we do need to promote activities that relate to the COVID times, not promote activities that don't. And some of the things around sporting, sporting club developments and, and others are likely to be facilities where we can't use them for some time because congregant crowds can't get together, the same at St Albans Health and Wellbeing Hub. So I would like to make those comments publicly and to say that we should be thinking about COVID safe work and that councillor, councillor Goodrich's motion does not allow for any of that.
I'll give you 30 more seconds councillor Headitch.
Thank you madam mayor, and, and I think we also need to be thinking about things that will help with recovery. One of the things that will help with recovery that's not mentioned in councillor Goodrich's notice of motion, sorry, motion, is that there is a possibility of doing a peer review piece of work on the Melbourne Airport Development Plan and that that is a $200,000 project identified by the.
Thank you councillor Headitch, thank you, time's up. Right, any other councillors that would like to make a comment on the Margaret substantive notice of motion? Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you madam mayor. The, we started our term in council in the, with a difficult budget, with a million dollars of discretionary spending and we're ending our term in COVID times with an equally difficult budget to deal with. And the proposal to defer to the next council, the multi-deck, which as a line item budget move is a very good move, I believe, to deliver a zero budget increase. Given the difficult times we're in, it's good to do, but it is amazing that we've been able to do that frankly. And I, I would also like to say that there are a number of things in this budget that are really quite excellent despite the incredibly difficult times we find ourselves in. And I won't say any more about the St Albans Leisure Centre, it has been previously mentioned. But that's a generational project that few councillors get to see happen in their municipalities. We've seen the, the development of a shared sports ground at the end of the Green Gully Reserve, which includes a a shared pavilion and car park. We walked that ground in our first year as councillors and in our last year as councillors to see this built into the budget, it is excellent and exciting. The substantial rate assistance to residential and business owners that is built into this budget and all the other COVID measures are great to see in these difficult times, well done. And funding to undertake, a personal interest of mine, funding to undertake studies for the Sydney Park, which include an environmental study, cultural heritage study, heritage study for the Robinsons Homestead and a study on the infrastructure. A, a park that had been set in policy since 2004.
You've got 30 seconds councillor Lancashire.
And now at the end of that time, we see a strategy adopted and money available for, for that. So that sets it up of course for the Matilda's bid, which is excellent for conservation, sporting grounds and, and as mentioned, the Robinsons Homestead. So there's a lot in this budget to commend to the councillors, well done to the staff for their incredible amount of work. I truly appreciate it and well done to this group of councillors.
Thank you councillor Lancashire.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, do I have any other councillors that would like to make any comments? Right councillor Goodrich, you've got a right of reply. Thank you.
Thank you madam mayor and thank you to the councillors. Madam mayor, I really don't know what, quite what to say. It's been an extraordinary few minutes. However, I will stand by my amended motion and procedurally, even if I wanted to put in an amendment, I can't put an amendment to another amendment, so that's not possible. However, a couple of points I just wish to raise from councillor Headitch speaking against it. The 240 litre charge, he's proposing from 698 to make it $50 less. We're talking about $50 madam mayor. And we're talking about also that in our waste litter and recycling strategy that we are encouraging people to produce less litter. So I would think that council would be thinking of phasing out the 240 litre bins somewhere in the future. So I'm not sure whether that would make a substantial difference, however. The measures that we have gone to in this budget to address the community concerns are very real and I believe that the motion that we have before us addresses the community, business and in fact everyone's needs right across the municipality. Of course, it's never enough, but I think that this council has considered quite seriously that we need to provide something to our residents right now in this very great time of need. So thank you madam, madam mayor, I'll finish it off at that, thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Goodrich. All right councillors, I'm going to ask you to vote on councillor Goodrich's amendment mo, motion. If that could be put on the screen one more time please. I'll just give you 30 seconds to look at it councillors. And if it could be scrolled up a little bit please. Thank you councillors, all right, I'm going to put this substantive motion to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carried, thank you. So I can't hear. Oh.
Division.
Did you ask for a division councillor Headitch? Okay. All those who voted in favour, please put your hand up and then put it down once I've called your name. Councillor Genevieve Aziz, councillor Bruce Lancashire, councillor Margaret Goodrich, councillor Victoria Borg, councillor Daniel Allen, councillor Kim Tien Trung and councillor Sam David and myself councillor Georgina Papafoude. Those who voted against, hands up. We've got councillor John Headitch. Thank you. Okay councillors, we move on to the next item 12.6. We need to ask councillor Thang to return from the holding bay. Councillor, could you please identify yourself?
Councillor Yuen An Pham.
Thank you councillors, did you hear her? Sam, yep. Councillor Borg? Okay, thank you everyone. Okay. Councillor, item number 12.6 Governance Report, August 2020. I'll ask Mr Hogan to present this report please.
Apologies, thank you madam mayor. The monthly governance. Sorry, is there a problem? Sorry, I'll continue. Thank you madam mayor, the monthly governance report is a standing item within the ordinary council meeting agenda. It is a summary of recent governance activity in accordance with best practice and good governance principles. Written in compliance with provisions applying respectively in the Local Government Act 89 and the Local Government Act of 2020, the report variously informs council of delegated decisions, outcomes of previous council resolutions or seeks relevant decision for action.
Thank you councillor, Mr Hogan. Councillors, do I have any questions or points of clarification for Mr Hogan? Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Goodrich?
Thank you madam mayor, I'll move the recommendation as printed in the business papers. And to be noted that at part N, appoint to the Facility Naming Advisory Committee St Albans Leisure Centre Development Project, the mayor as chair and councillors Trung and Lancashire as members.
Thank you councillor Goodrich. Do I have a secondive for this item? Councillor Borg? Thank you councillor Goodrich.
Yes madam mayor, just briefly, it does contain a lot, this governance report this month. There are instruments of delegation, usually the usual reporting of portfolio meetings, all of our new rules, meetings with MPs, contracts entered into, the draft open space contributions policy, the naming of the advisory committee also for the St Albans Leisure Centre, the naming of the committee members for the Brooklyn Industrial Precinct Committee also. So, not to say this council hasn't been doing any work madam mayor, it's certainly, this report actually signifies the amount of work that is actually being done in the last month because it is a monthly report, so thank you to everyone involved and as I said, quite a jam-packed report.
Sure is, thank you councillor Goodrich. Councillor Borg, would you like to say a few words?
No thanks madam mayor, I think councillor Judy Jay covered it quite well and it is a quite a corporate heads report, thank you.
Do I have any other councillors that would like to make any comments for this report? All right, I'll put it to a vote, all those in favour? Against? Carried, thank you. Okay. Item 12.7 Advocacy Achievements and Next Steps, Update and Options. Councillor, Mr Hogan, do you mind presenting this report?
Sorry. Apologise, thank you madam mayor. The purpose of tonight's report is to note the advocacy outcomes secured through the advancement of the Transforming Brimbank Agenda 2020 and to receive and endorse the COVID-19 advocacy plan.
Thank you Mr Hogan. Any questions or points of clarification councillors? No, do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Goodrich? A seconder? Councillor Trum, thank you.
I'll move the recommendation as printed in the business papers madam mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Goodrich, would you like to make some comments on this?
Just a few comments madam, madam mayor. I think this report is definitely a good news story despite COVID-19. Council has helped attract over $70 million in programmes, projects and initiatives as documented in the table included in the report. The Transforming Brimbank Agenda has identified three key policy responses and a 19-point plan which are all equally as important to attract and deliver projects and dollars as we continue to manoeuvre and adjust to COVID, to a COVID environment and more importantly, to live beyond it. Great work by everyone, thank you very much.
I'll say councillor Goodrich, councillor Borg, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you madam mayor, again I want to echo councillor Headitch, Judy Jay's comments. It's a great report and it's great to see the, the achievements that we have achieved through advocacy, so well done everyone, thank you.
Thank you councillor Borg. Any other councillors that would like to make a comment for this report? Okay, I'll put it to a vote, all those in favour? Against? Carried, thank you. Item 12.8 Transforming Brimbank Draft Vision and Future Outcomes. Mr Walsh, could you please present this report?
Thank you madam mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider endorsing the draft Transforming Brimbank Leading With Vision Future Priorities report shown as attachment one for the purpose of targeted stakeholder engagement and direct council officers to undertake, undertake that targeted consultation about the draft vision and future priorities. And it also seeks council direction to provide copies of the draft vision and future priorities to a range of identified ministers and members of both the Commonwealth and state parliaments and various government departments. The officer recommendation is for council to endorse the attached document and direct a range of actions as detailed in the recommendation. Thank you madam mayor.
Thank you Mr Walsh. Are there any questions or points of clarification councillor Headitch?
Just one madam mayor, this is a great contribution to the visions that are around the place at the moment. I'm just wondering how the community will be involved in this going forward.
Through you madam mayor, the community, this document of course.
The community, this document, of course, builds on the previous document that was presented to council and adopted by council, which was the building Brimbank document that undertook extensive community consultation. In addition, council, the document draws on over 50 documents that all involved community engagement. We anticipate that council will be presented with the outcomes of the targeted stakeholder engagement in February, and at that point in time, council may wish to undertake more extensive consultation with the community about the framework plan that we see as building the important next step.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Are there any other questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Sam David? Sorry, we can't hear you, Sam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm of the reporters reading the business paper, thank you.
Thank you for that. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Headige? Councillor David, would you like to speak to this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is to do with the portfolio connecting Brimbank, and key pillars on the connecting Brimbank portfolio include public transport, freight roads, the Western Rail, Regional Rail Plan, including the Melbourne Airport rail link and Sunshine Super Hub, are critical components, Madam Mayor, in truly enormous, once-in-a-generation transformation. The draft vision and future priorities provides an exciting vision for 2050. This report reminds us that it's been based on the building Brimbank consultation and review of over 50 council and state policies. The Sunshine Precinct has been prioritised by state government and council with the aim to unleash double the number of jobs and residents by 2050. In particular, this creation of thriving Sunshine CBD will bring economic and social benefits for the entire Brimbank community and the wider Western region. The Melbourne Airport rail and upgrades to Sunshine and Albion stations are tremendous opportunities, Madam Mayor, to unlock the potential of the Sunshine CBD. Brimbank and the Sunshine Precinct are both strategically positioned to undergo extensive transformation over the coming decades. The Sunshine Precinct has been identified as a state significant area for considerable jobs and housing growth, supported by once-in-a-generation government investment across the precinct, including a precedent in investment in transport infrastructure. It's important that the future vision and outcomes communicated to allow all stakeholders, including state government, key institutions, landlords, business, and their wider community, to find share purpose and deliver coordinated outcomes and maximise community benefit. This is a great futuristic report, Madam Mayor, and I commend that to council.
Thank you, councillor David. Councillor Headige? Would you like to say a few words?
I would, thank you, Madam Mayor. I echo the words of councillor David. Councillor David, we recall, we were going to the Sunshine Partnership meetings when we first started up as a council, and we were looking for concept plans of various things, and so it's great that we have them now. And this is a comprehensive view of the precinct with various different aspects shown there. I congratulate the staff for all the hard work they've done. This is the first time councils put something like this to, sorry, the administration's put something like this to the council, and it is a welcome piece of information. Also great to see the capacity and capability building inside the organisation to do pieces of work like this. The particular document we have in front of us comes at the end of our term. It goes to government when the development boom has passed, and we have a COVID situation in place, and much will need to change, and there will be lots of discussions about what's in it, and what could be done differently in the future. I guess to me, it sits beside the WAMIDA vision that came out, Steve Brax launched a while ago, and more recently, the Greater Sunshine Community Alliance produced a vision for the Sunshine area as well. And so it sits with this one. So we have three documents now with visions for the area, that's great. I think there's a point in time where we do need to get back to community, as Director Walsh has just told us. February next year sounds good, when there has been more targeted consultation involvement with departments and other key stakeholders that may be interested in investing in Sunshine over the coming years as COVID ceases and into the future, as our, I guess, our next development boom comes along in the decades ahead. We look forward to the precinct developing the way it is intended to develop. We look forward to Schweppe and St Albans and other communities, all part of this precinct, coming together as one under a vision document that council develops and develops further over the years. I commend this report to the council group.
Thank you, councillor Headige. Do I have any other speakers for this item? Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would certainly like to endorse the comments of the previous two councillors in relation to this. This is a good report. It's exciting to see, looking forward to 2050. We have seen, of course, the 3D computer rendering of some of the ideas for the centre. We've seen the pictures of the pedestrianisation of some parts of the centre, and it looks very interesting, very futuristic, and very exciting. So I don't want to say too much, but certainly it is something I think we can look forward to in February, getting that as a stepped process, getting that feedback from government departments, and taking it forward from there. But it is a great report. Well done to the staff, very impressive. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any other speakers for this item? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carried. Thank you. Item 12.9, State Review to Decriminalise Sex Work in Victoria. Mr Walsh, could you please present this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to note that council officers have provided a submission to the review into the decriminalisation of sex work in Victoria, as shown at attachment one, and for council to consider endorsing the submission and advising the inquiry secretary of council endorsement. The officer recommendation is for council to note the submission attached. Note that officers have already submitted that attachment to the inquiry on the 17th of July, and councillor also asked to endorse the submission and advise the secretary accordingly.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification for this report? None, thank you. Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Goodie-Chair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually move to defer this report.
Okay, councillor Goodie-Chair. Do I have a seconda that would like to have this report deferred? Councillor Lancashire? Councillor Goodie-Chair, would you like to speak to why you would like this report deferred?
I just think I would like to have a briefing from the officers and further discuss this report. We had a number of public questions this evening, Madam Mayor, so I think a discussion on this report and a briefing by the officers would be very welcome.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Lancashire, would you like to make any comments on that? Okay, any other councillors that would like to make comments about deferring this report? Councillor Headige?
I'd like to support it, Madam Mayor. I think it's a wise move. We're getting conflicting advice. We need to listen to that advice and to get this right. There are people affected by this, and I think getting it right for everyone is the way to go. So I support a deferring and a briefing by the officers and the expert group involved with it.
Okay. Any other comments by the other councillors? All right, I'll have to put this to a vote. All those in favour in deferring this report? Right, passed. Thank you. Carried. All right. 12.10, Creating Better Parks Policy and Plan, Draft Community Report Card for 2019 to 2020. I invite Mr Whiteside to present this report, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider endorsing the Creating Better Parks Policy and Plan Draft Community Report Card for 2019-20, which is an attachment one to the report, and also the annual assessment and subsequent changes to the park network in the Creating Better Parks Policy and Plan 2016. The draft community report card provides a summary of implementation of Creating Better Parks Policy and Plan in the financial year 2019-20. It also includes details on park upgrade works completed, as well as a proposed change to a park classification in the policy and plan based on annual assessments. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for that. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification for Mr Whiteside?
No.
Okay, do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Lancashire?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the recommendation in the notice paper.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda for this report? Councillor Goodie-Chair? Okay, would the mover like to speak to this report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. As portfolio councillor for the livable Brimbank portfolio, which looks at urban amenities, recreation, urban design, and facilities, I am pleased to see the Creating Better Parks Community Report Card 2019 to 20 presented this evening. The report card includes details of park upgrade works completed as part of the annual budget 2019-2020. The Creating Better Parks Policy and Plan was first adopted by council in 2008 as a blueprint to transform the park network in Brimbank. The aim was to create one of the best park networks in Melbourne, and anyone who has spent family time at Alice's Playspace Earrington, the famous Rocket Park at Buckingham Reserve, Sunvale Community Park in Sunshine, or the new Lakes Reserve can attest to the popularity and value of our parks and award-winning ice spaces bring to our community. It is important to note that extensive consultation and community engagement in creating better parks has reflected the ideas of the community. The current Creating Better Parks network includes seven flagship parks, 29 suburban parks, 120 neighbourhood parks, and 100 local reserves. Since 2008, approximately $35 million has been invested in upgrading 111 parks. Since 2008, Creating Better Parks has won seven industry awards from the Australian Institute of Landscape Architects, the Planning Institute of Australia, Parks and Leisure Australia, and Keep Victoria Beautiful. The most recent award was for the Sunvale Community Park in 2019, receiving a high commendation in the category of environmental sustainability from Keep Victoria Beautiful. Brimbank's public and open spaces are safe, clean, and well managed. The report card demonstrates success in creating a livable community, a place where our community belong and are proud where they live. I commend this report to council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Councillor Goodie-Chair, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, $35 million invested, 111 parks upgraded since 2008, when the previous council actually endorsed this plan. And it was quite an achievement to do that then, Madam Mayor. There's been a lot going on in our parks. Of course, the plan has been reviewed from time to time and will continue to be reviewed according to community needs, and is also evidenced by the motion that was moved by councillor Lancashire. But it will continue to be a very important document, not just now, but into the future, to guide the needs of our open space. So for a report card, Madam Mayor, and I'm sure you'll have a laugh at this, because you're a previous teacher as well, the report card would receive an A+ from me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Goodie-Chair. I'd give it a gold star. Okay, do I have any other councillors? Councillor Headige?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to also commend the value of the Creating Better Parks Policy and Plan. I remember writing submissions to have it established in 2008. And councillor Lancashire talked about the fine achievements it's made, and how we want to have the best park networks around, and that we want safe, clean, and well-managed parks. And I guess when you look at the report card, you see there's been a stage three upgrade of the Lakes Reserve and Tailers Lakes and suburban parks upgraded and so on. But I look at the Creating Better Parks policy now, and I look at the outcomes, and we've just mentioned a whole heap of fine ones, and the awards that have been won. But I look sideways, and I look at the flagship park, $3 million spent on stage three, and I look to North Sunshine, where we had a report recently about the inequity that is across this city in terms of access to parks and open spaces in that community compared to others. And I wonder how priorities are set where a stage three upgrade can happen when a community doesn't have access to a park at all. And I wonder how a $200,000 upgrade in one particular community in North Sunshine is big enough to cater for that whole community going forward. I think we have a real access and equity problem at the moment with the way the policy is being implemented and prioritised. So for me, it's a great policy and plan, but it's not working as well as it used to. It's leaving people out, it's leaving communities behind, and that there needs to be some work done on getting it back in order so that the communities that are underdone, that don't have the access to parks and open spaces that others do in Brimbank, are able to catch up. And I think that's the work of the next council. It's the work of the officers in making Creating Better Parks a fairer policy and plan than what it is today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do I have any other councillors that would like to speak on this report? Okay, councillor Lancashire, you've got a right reply to councillor Headige's comments. Would you like to speak? Pardon? Councillor Headige?
Point of order, Madam Mayor, I'm not speaking against it. I'm basically saying that it's a great policy, we've got a report card, but there are issues that need to be worked on.
Okay, councillor Headige. All right, councillors, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carried. Thank you. 12.11, Final Draft Library Strategy 2020 to 2025. Ms Dumble? Would you please present this report? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to note the submissions received on the draft library strategy 2020 to 25 at attachment one. Following the community consultation period, council received 10 submissions in relation to the draft library strategy. A summary of the issues raised in the submissions to the draft strategy and the council officer considerations and recommendations is at attachment two. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms Dumble, are there any questions or points of clarification? None? Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Borg?
I'll move the motion as per business papers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a seconda for this report? Councillor Farne? Councillor Borg, would you like to speak to this report?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor, thank you. As portfolio champion for the Brimbank People Portfolio, which includes lifelong learning, I am very pleased to see the final draft library strategy report presented to council this evening. I am very proud of the critical work being undertaken by our I am very proud of the critical work being undertaken by our libraries. Brimbank has five branch libraries, an online library, a home library service, 240,000 collection items held, 1.3 million loans annually and over 80,000 members. During the recent libraries' buildings closure due to the COVID-19 pandemic, our libraries quickly responded with innovative solutions to support the community. Now in stage four lockdown, our libraries are again pivoting and responding to meet the needs of the community in even more challenging times. A pleasing note is that membership significantly increased during the stage three COVID-19 lockdown. I would like to acknowledge all involved in providing exceptional and innovative services during this period, demonstrating a council goal of being innovative and responsive, putting our community first. The strategic framework for library collections underpins the library strategy 2020-2025. Emerging priorities for the library strategy are places and belonging, learning, community, lifelong readers and being future focused. The strategy responds to the community's needs and interests. And most importantly for me, it fosters the love of lifelong reading and learning. I commend this report to council.
Thank you, Councillor Borg. Councillor Farm, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to echo Councillor Borg of what she was saying, but also I also want to express my feeling also. I think it's also the feeling of a lot of our community about library, which is like our first destination when we come to the new land, the new municipality, that we want to call it our home. And that's the place that most of people go to visit firstly. And everyone feel very welcoming, feel that place of belonging as because we're providing our books in a few languages. Also, there's certain services that we provide to people or support people that come to our library. And we keep progressing our work as well, not just stopping there. So I highly recommend this report to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Farm. Do I have any other speakers for this item? Councillor Goodie-Chair?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, thank you. I must say that libraries have certainly come a long way since I was at school. It's not just about picking up the book on the shelf anymore. Council has certainly moved with the times in many, many ways, not only just during this COVID crisis, but all along the way councillors found ways to deliver services innovatively in our libraries. So I commend all the work that the staff do by finding new ways of engaging the community in our libraries. And they continue to be a source of information, to be social, to catch up for children, to go there, story time with their mums, older people, younger, but all ages go to the libraries. So really, any support that we can give our libraries and especially state and federal governments, if you're listening, we could do with some more funding in our libraries as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Goodie-Chair. Do I have any other speakers for this report? I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against, carried, thank you. 12.12 Draft Community Safety Strategy 2020 to 2024. Ms Dumble, could you please present this report? You're on mute, we can't hear you, Lindley.
Apologies. The purpose of this report is for council to consider the draft final safe and inclusive Brimbank 2020 to 2024 at attachment one. Council's new proposed community safety strategy is a result of extensive research and consultation. The final draft strategy recognises that social inclusion is a key element in preventing crime and supporting safe and inclusive communities. The broad approach and the priority areas of the final strategy were affirmed by feedback received from the community during public exhibition from the 23rd of March until the 12th of June 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Dumble. Are there any questions or points of clarification, councillors? Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Aziz?
I move this as per papers, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second report? Councillor Borg? Thank you. Councillor Aziz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As councillor of the healthy Brimbank Portfolio, which covers enhanced wellbeing, healthy outcomes and inclusive communities, the Safe and Inclusive Brimbank Strategy 2020-2024 report reflects an important pillar of my portfolio. A comprehensive research and engagement process was undertaken to inform the development of the Safe and Inclusive Brimbank Strategy. The outcomes of this research and engagement show that social inclusion is a key element in creating a welcoming and diverse community where people feel safe, included and able to contribute and participate. The new Safe Inclusive Brimbank Strategy is underpinned by the principles of social inclusion. It recognises that a community that is welcoming, connected and celebrates diversity will be a safer and more inclusive place for people to live and work. The new strategy focuses on three priority areas. Strong communities, this priority area focuses on building a community where people feel safer, where crime is reduced and residents are supported to feel included and actively contribute to the community. Safer streets and public spaces, this priority area focuses on the design and the maintenance of public spaces in order to enhance the protection of safety and reduce optimistic crimes. Strategic partnerships, community safety is a shared responsibility across government, police, service providers, business and the community. This priority area focuses on formal structures such as the Safety Roundtable and the partnership and collaboration with Victoria Police and the community and other stakeholders. Over the next four years, the new strategy will be important to help our community rebuild and recover from the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic in partnership with all levels of government, police and community service providers. I commend this new strategy council to council for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Aziz. Councillor Borg, would you like to make some comments to this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I would like to echo Councillor Aziz's comments with regards to this draft. Council has a longstanding commitment to community safety with a strategic focus since 2004. This is a comprehensive process that has been involved, has been undertaken to inform the development of the draft final strategy. And it's interesting to note that this draft final strategy has been very much directed by the recent data released by the Department of Justice and Community Safety, which highlighted the importance of pro-social responses and improving social cohesion in addressing perceptions of crime and safety within the community. This is also in line with the feedback from the community and analysis community impacts presented by COVID-19, which suggests that social inclusive policy and programmes are now more important than ever. This is a fantastic piece of work and I really want to acknowledge the hard work that has been put behind it by the officers. And I would again would like to commend this to council also. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Borg. Are there any other councillors that would like to make a comment on this? Councillor Hiddich?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I echo the comments of councillors Aziz and Borg. I'd also like to make comments with my prosperous Brimbank portfolio hat on. The three priority areas around stronger community, strategic partnerships and safer streets and public spaces. I wanted to talk a bit about safer streets and public spaces with that prosperous Brimbank hat on. We've had a lot of comments from traders and various groups about the need to do more in this space, in this community safety space. And I'm here to be a community voice for those groups. We've also heard tonight with the new residential hotel approval that there is an issue in terms of getting around the CBD of Sunshine area. And I think there's also been issues in that St Albans area. But we've done, we've made interventions there to help improve things. We need to do things down this way as well. And also Morda Gardens and other spaces and places. But I think what it demonstrates to me is that there has to be a connection of community safety to any streetscape work that we do in creating better streets and that we need to make sure that that design and that aspiration of community inclusion and the ability to activate the streets and make them places where people can come together in a safe way is so important. So I look forward to hearing more about safer streets and public spaces. I look forward to hearing more about how we might develop up an alliance with the streetscape interventions that come together to create a whole better community and a more livable community going forward, but most importantly, a safer community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hiddich. Are there any other comments? Councillor Trung, is that you? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that I just act in, we had a council, councillor already mentioned, I think the safety for the community is really important and a priority for every member in our community. Safety in the public or safety in their home or and care for the roundtables, safety. I show a loss of community group, it's really concerned, really put in force about safety for our community. I highlight, recommend all the housework from the staff. And I think that we need to redirect result to order to give effect to the recommendation in this report. So any redact, redaction, we send a ball, we why every show of the chain called by the COVID-19 pandemic. And I caught them with any allegation made by council will be affecting the tick time. And a councillor, John Head, as it mentioned, is a lot of business people along, they really worry about the safety. And I think this is really important for our community when we have the final of the, from the council decision for this safety for the community. When it's been final, it's really important. And I think every member in the community stakeholder and the president, they look forward to see and what the decision we make. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Trung. Are there any other speakers for this report? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. Those in favour? Against, carried. Two things, councillors. First, I need someone to move that we have an extension of half an hour for this council meeting. Do I have a mover? Councillor Goodie-Chair, a second to councillor David? Thank you. All those in favour? Against, carried. I'm also, at this stage, it's 9.50, I'm giving everyone a five minute break. We're to be here in five minutes, 9.55 please, thank you. We'll just have to do a quick check. Okay. We'll start, we're all probably placed in different positions. Councillor Genevieve, could you please state your full name and?
Councillor Genevieve Aziz?
And councillors, just show your card, please, if you can see and hear it. Thank you. Councillor Sam? David, could you introduce yourself and introduce yourself first? We can't hear you.
Councillor Sam David?
Thank you. Cards, please. Okay. Councillor Kim Tiantrom? Introduce yourself, please.
Councillor Kim Tiantrom?
Everyone can hear her. Sam, can you hear her? Sam? Can you hear councillor Kim Tiantrom? Yep. All right, councillor John Hiddich?
Yes, Madam Mayor, councillor John Hiddich.
Okay, cards, please. Councillor David, is that your hand up there? Okay, councillor Bruce Lancashire?
Councillor Bruce Lancashire?
Thank you. Okay, councillor Margaret Goodie-Chair?
Councillor Margaret Goodie-Chair?
Thank you. Okay, councillor Daniel Allen?
Councillor Daniel Allen?
Councillor Victoria Borg? Can't hear you.
Councillor Victoria Borg?
Thank you. And councillor Duinan Farm?
Councillor Duinan Farm?
Okay. Obviously, you can all hear me. Thank you. All right. We'll recommence the meeting now. And the next item is 12.13 Youth Recreation Centre Co-Design Study. I invite Ms Dumble to present this report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider the Brimbank Youth Recreation Centre Co-Design Study at attachment one. The study provides options for council to meet some of the recreational needs of disengaged young people, both in the short and long term. The report recognises the specific needs of this group of young people, those aged 12 to 20 years, and demonstrates how mainstream leisure and recreational opportunities do not cater for them. The focus of the study was to consult with disengaged young people and stakeholders through a co-design process about what specific activities young people would participate in within a youth recreation centre and what this type of facility or spaces would look like. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Dumble. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? None? Okay, thank you. Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Borg?
I would like to move the motion as per business papers.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this report? Councillor Hiddich? Thank you, Councillor Borg. Would you like to speak to this report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. At the ordinary council meeting on the 11th of December 2018, council noted the visibility study on a youth recreation centre and the officer response to recommendations. A key action from the recommendations was for a co-design group comprising key stakeholders. A key action from the recommendations was for a co-design group comprising key stakeholders, representatives to investigate and develop options for a youth recreational centre and to investigate or trial programme options. This resulted in the youth recreation centre co-design and location study. The study provides options for council to meet some of the recreational needs of disengaged young people, specifically those aged twelve to twenty years, both in the short and long term. Key learnings were that the current recreation and leisure options and programming do not meet the needs of disengaged young people. Young people indicated that they only hang out at shopping centres and train stations as there were no other options for them at home or within the broader community. Innovative ways of thinking about how young people use existing spaces and facilities is required. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, there will be even more young people, not only unemployed, but also disengaged from education and training. There is also concern that isolation and social distancing have led to young people missing out on their physical health and wellbeing needs. This is important work and we need to maintain momentum of this initiative. I commend this report to council.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillor Headitch? Would you like to say a few words?
I do, Madam Mayor, and I'd like to echo the words of councillor Borg and also commend the officers on the report and the organisations that have been helping pull that co-design report together. It's so important. We have a huge number of young people out of work already. We have emerging issues galore. And I don't think there's a bigger job for a future council to do than to get their heads around how we do develop the next generation of young people in this city. We have before us a report that paints a picture, but that picture needs action. And I don't think the time is left now to call on others to do things. We have to start doing it ourselves. And we've made budget commitments tonight and various other things. Going forward, we're going to have to rely on our own resources, resources of the young people themselves and others in the community who can help. But we also need to start, I think, ramping. I know that all the work that's gone on around advocacy and things like that, but where do we go? Where do we go in future? We've done so much and got so little. We have a community that's on its knees, a group of young people who are probably worse affected than any in the, in the whole of the state. And I just, I just wonder where we're going to get that support from. No point putting the head down and worrying about it too much. It's a matter of everyone getting together and getting organised and getting the strength of community behind it because we need to look after our young people. We need to bring, bring them along and they need to be leading the charge with us. So I commend the report. I commend councillor Borg and all the people in the portfolio areas and inside the council for the work they're doing. But boy, have we got some work to do in this space going forward. Commend the report to councillors.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Any other speakers for this report? Councillor Farm?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think this is a very important co-design and report that should be highly implemented and brought forward. Going through this report, I think it's, this work is like giving a hand to someone who have fall already and try to pull them up and be normal, just be normal first before they actually progress. And that's our young people. And it's either a quite significant important step that we do in supporting our young people. I also recognise there's a lot of our young, our youth actually leave school or not getting engaged with anything in their society, any good thing in society, maybe just because of one little incident. Or maybe they, their English literacy is not very good and they just fall out. But you know, with a different thing that we plan for them in the future, I hope that will help and bring a better future for our youth. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Farm. Any other speakers for this report? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour. Against Carrie. Thank you. Twelve point one four, Draft Strategic Directions for Library Collections Consultation Report. Ms Stumble, you're a busy lady tonight. Could you please present this?
The purpose of this report is for council to note the submissions received on the draft strategic framework for library collections two thousand and twenty to twenty five and consider adopting the final draft strategic framework for library collections at attachment one. The draft framework was available for public comment between April twenty third and fifth of June. Council received three submissions in relation to the draft strategic framework. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Okay, do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Borg?
Yes, I move the motion as per business papers.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this report? Councillor Goodrich, thank you. Councillor Borg, would you like to?
Yes, yes.
About this report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The draft strategic framework for library collections two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty five has been developed to respond to the community needs and interest, foster the love of reading and learning and guides council's investment in library collections. As we know, the library collection has played a vital role in supporting the community during the COVID nineteen restrictions with home deliveries, access to online materials and activities. The collection comprises of print materials, multimedia and electronic resources for reading, listening to and viewing. Approximately one-fifth of the collection comprises of digital content. This is a key element of the library collection. It enhances rather than replaces traditional physical collections. There are six themes which provide a framework for managing Brimbank's library collections into the future. Developing a reading culture, supporting lifelong learning and literacy, celebrating culture and heritage, celebrating diversity, supporting economic, civic and social participation and curating a community-focused collection. This framework provides the direction to ensure collections reflect, recognise, respect and value Brimbank's residents, workers, visitors and cultures. I commend this report to council.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Would the, would the second like to speak to this motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, excuse me, Madam Mayor. Just to continue on also with the library strategy is the report at twelve point eleven that we had earlier on tonight. These two reports do tie in together. And I wish to echo the sentiments of councillor Borg, but also to raise, Madam Mayor, that the community is saying that libraries are not just more than books, more than books, which is what I also said before. Is also a provision of welcoming collections and services and programmes for young people. But there was also a comment made about the provision of wide selection of hard copy resources rather than directing people to use the digital options, which is a very interesting comment because we think that everyone's going to go to the digital options. But there's a section obviously of the community out there that still want the libraries to be what they were in the past. You pick up a book and you read it. No Kindle, no iPad, no computer, you know, no audiobooks. Just simply pick up a book and read it. And that's really good to know that there still is that element there of our community that regard our libraries for that purpose as well. And of course, a provision of quiet spaces to study as well, which most of our youth would probably take advantage of. I know when we used to come into the council offices, which seems like forever ago. Most of the times I'd walk in through the library and I'd see a number of students taking advantage of our spaces to quietly study at home. Perhaps because the space at home is not adequate for them to quietly study. So that's also a provision of a service that we are going, that we are still continuing, Madam Mayor. So I do definitely recommend this report to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Goodrich. Are there any other councillors that would like to speak to this report? No? I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour. Against Carrie. Thank you. Okay, twelve point one five, council plan draft year four, annual action plan two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty one. It's Stumble. Would you please present this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider the Brimbank Council Plan Draft Year Four Action Plan two thousand and twenty twenty one at Attachment One. The draft action plan contains a hundred and fifteen actions related to the seventeen strategic objectives of the council plan. The progress of actions are reported to council on a quarterly basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or points of clarification? Do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Goodrich, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll move the recommendation as printed in the business papers.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this report? Councillor Borg. Okay. Councillor Goodrich, would you like to make some comments on this report?
Yes, just briefly, Madam Mayor. Council plan, I can't believe that we're in year four of the council plan, which means that we helped formulate with the community this council current, this current council plan. We're in year four, which is quite incredible. And we certainly have consulted with quite a bit of the community. And of course, we always, always welcome our comments from the community. And every year, of course, we review the council plan and the next council will review the council plan again and they'll have a new council plan. And that's also because we have to ensure that the council plan is transparent and that the council plan is developed and implemented according to the community needs. So we do have a hundred and fifteen actions relating to seventeen strategic objectives. And they are, of course, within the existing resources and budget. The progress of the actions are reported to council on a quarterly plan. Don't wish to say anymore, Madam Mayor, but simply to say that I do commend the report and also the year four annual action plan. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Goodrich. Councillor Borg? Would you like to make any comments on this report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly to say that again, this is quite a comprehensive report and that councillor Judy Che covered it pretty well. But perhaps it's important to mention also that, to note rather, the implementations of year one of a number of strategies that were adopted by council, including what we mentioned, the Brimbank library strategy, the strategic framework for library collections, Brimbank people's strategy, Brimbank children's strategy and Brimbank community youth strategy, as well as the Brimbank year one actions in the Brimbank climate emergency plan. So again, there is a lot of information there. It's a very comprehensive report. And I would like to commend this report to council.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Any other councillors that wish to speak to this report? Okay, I'll put this forward to councillors to vote. Those in favour. Against Carrie. Thank you. Okay, twelve point one six, volunteer strategy two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty two. Also the disability action plan two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty and the age-friendly city plan two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty two yearly report cards. Okay, Ms Stumble.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to note the disability action plan, age-friendly city plan and volunteer strategy yearly report cards. These documents guide council's commitment to work collaboratively with other levels of government, business, service providers and community groups. They determine council's approach to emerging trends, future opportunities and ensure relevant systems and processes are in place to respond to community needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms Stumble. Any questions or points of clarification, councillors? Okay, do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Borg?
I move the motion as per business papers.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this report? Okay, councillor Goodrich, thank you. Councillor Borg?
Yeah. At this month's portfolio meeting, we looked at report cards for the volunteer strategy two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty two, disability action plan two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and twenty and the age-friendly city plan two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and twenty two. The volunteer report card highlights include, we have four hundred and forty registered Brimbank council volunteers, launch of the Better Impact Online Volunteer Management System, partnered with Volunteer West to deliver the two thousand and twenty Brimbank Volunteer Expo. Fifty-eight percent of our volunteers are aged fifty and above, plans to expand the Brimbank community register by an additional three hundred new members and continuing to explore virtual communication options for seniors. With regards to the disability report card, highlights include transitioned Brimbank Disability Network meetings to be facilitated by a digital platform to ensure connections and support during COVID nineteen, invested in partnerships with local schools, particularly with the Jackson School and Sunshine Special Development School in supporting funded equity students to critical supports, increased awareness of council's community register for vulnerable clients to access weekly phone chats or as required, support council volunteers in working from home to provide support to community register residents, realign how community engagement practices can be developed post-COVID, exploring sustainable engagement programmes for people with disabilities, their families and carers, trying hard to get new people involved in the carers group and ongoing review of the disability action plan. And finally, the age-friendly city plan included highlights such as the thirty-one percent of Brimbank residents are aged fifty years and over and thirty-nine percent of this population are either older workers or pre-retirees. The top five ethnicities for residents over sixty-five years are, one, Malta, two, Italy, three, Vietnam, four, Greece, five, Croatia. Received seniors' participation grant funding for the Bingo and Beyond Social Inclusion Project. And finally, two thousand four hundred, two thousand forty-six seniors over sixty-five received aged care services between July the first two thousand and nineteen to thirty of April two thousand and twenty. I commend this report to council.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillor Goodrich? Would you like to say some words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't think there's possibly anything that I could add to councillor Borg's report. Thank you very much to councillor Borg. Thank you.
Very informative. Thank you. Any other councillors? Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to commend the officers for the reports. There are three important areas and it's good to see the cards, report cards coming through. I wanted to make a comment with my past social justice hat, but my current DAC committee hat on, I've been on DAC. committee hat on, I've been on DAC for the life of this council. And it's great to see the disability report coming forward. I just wanted to flag that as I finish up my time on the council that the feasibility study into a disability carers hub was done some time back and it had about seven elements to it. And we aren't getting regular reporting on the comprehensive whole. We're getting bits and pieces of it around the St Albans Carers Hub and things like that. But there's information components, there's all sorts of different components to it. And each of them add up to something holistic and special. And I'd love to see some regular reporting on how the whole is coming along, not just one part every now and then. It's an important initiative for carers, people with disability in this particular community. We have a lot of them and they need as much support as we can get. So can I encourage the officers and councillor Borg, as she does her fabulous work chairing the committee, to encourage a holistic reporting of what's happening with that disability carers hub and how each of the elements are being progressed? Because four years is a long time and people have been very patient, but we need to get into action. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hidditch. Do I have any other councillors that would like to speak to this report? Okay, put it forward for a vote. All those in favour? Against Carrie. Thank you. 12.17 Waste Recycling and Litter Strategy 2018 to 2028. Draft Community Report Card 2019 to 2020. Before Mr Whiteside presents this report, councillors, we need another extension of half an hour. Could I please have a mover to move for that extension? Councillor Lancashire, a second of councillor David. Thank you. All those in favour? Carrie, thank you. Thank you, Mr Whiteside.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. At the ordinary council meeting on the 15th of May 2018, council adopted the Waste Recycling Litter Strategy 2018 to 2028 and noted a five-year implementation plan. The strategy outlines actions over the next 10 years that will move council closer to the aspirational goal of achieving zero waste to landfill. The purpose of this report is for council to consider endorsing the Brimbank Waste Recycling and Litter Strategy Draft Community Report Card for 2019-20 is at attachment one to the report. Draft Community Report Card details the actions undertaken in year two of the strategy implementation and includes expanded recycling materials, initiatives to reduce dumping of rubbish and a focus on helping community avoid waste. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Whiteside. Any questions or points of clarification, councillors? Okay, do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Trum? Would you like to move this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I move the report on the paperwork. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this report? Councillor Lancashire? Thank you, councillor Trum. Would you like to comment on this report?
Yes, editor councillor for the Sustainable Brimbank Portfolio, I'm pleased to see the Brimbank Waste Recycling and Litter Strategy Report Card 2019-2020 presented tonight. Each year, the Victorian community dump approximately 4.4 million tonnes of material into the brow of landfill. It is a major problem and most of it is recyclable for metal, plastics and last to the food and vegetarian. Reducing the landfill is critical. To do this, we need to recycle more and to away, be aware of the amount of material, product and package we are consuming. This report shows Brimbank is making a difference of reducing waste in recent composting, in recent recycling and creating a leaner, bringing and more sustainable environment for Brimbank into the future. To not a few highlight, in 2019-2020, there were 6.6 million household collection for garbage, recyclable and rinse waste. Fifty percent of household new option green waste recycling bin, 31,400 store of waste were recycled in 2019-2020. We delivery effective education forum and community awareness campaign focused on waste reduction and reduction of contamination of recycling. The set for introduction of new house waste collection service and a focus in Lego Dumpling Hospital. I commend this report to the council, but I would like to ask something. We have the complete collection house waste, it's about 18,426. And the option to pay option for the collection house waste is about 1,180. We improve online booking service and I just would like to remind a member in the community, even you have the house waste collection in the end of June, but now you still can make the booking for this final year. The really in British is the composting education. If we have during the COVID-19, we still have 2,295 household engaged online. So I just would like to recommend to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Trum. Councillor Lancashire, would you like to say any words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just some brief comments. We adopted back in 2018 the Waste Management Strategy, which was great. And we all expected as councillors, we are very much interested in waste. It's one of our big functions and we thought we'd simply get on with the strategy. And, and it quickly became incredibly complex and thank you, I think to the director, Neil Whiteside, and councillor Trum in, in dealing with all these matters that have been going forward in terms of the, the problem with shipping waste to China, the multiple bins, the COVID situation and the growth in waste through that period, the changes to FOGO, it is an extremely interesting and complex. And we can even look forward to things like a conversion to electric waste, side loaders and things like that for the next council. So there's quite a lot of exciting things, difficult things that we've had to deal with and exciting things coming up. So again, thank you councillor Trum and, and the director, Neil Whiteside, for all their work in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Are there any other speakers for this report? I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against Carrie. Thank you. 12.18 Final Draft Car Parking Management Plans for Sunshine and St Albans Activity Centres and Final Draft Parking Permit Policy. Mr Whiteside, would you please present this report?
Just was councillor Pham just wanting to declare?
Yes, councillor Pham, thank you. Julian, do you mind putting councillor Pham in the holding bay, please? Thank you. Mr Whiteside, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider adopting the final draft car parking management plans for Sunshine and St Albans Activity Centres at Attachment One and Attachment Two to the report. Also, the final draft parking permit policy at Attachment Three, following the six weeks of community consultation. The consultation on the draft plans and draft policy commenced on the 22nd of May and closed on the 3rd of July this year. Council received 32 written submissions on the final draft car park management plans, a summary of the key issues raised and council office response is provided at Attachment Four. Council also received 56 written submissions on the final draft parking permit policy and a summary of the key issues raised and council office response is at Attachment Five. Now, given the need to raise awareness of the plans and the policy, subject to obviously council's adoption tonight, along with ordering and installation of required signage, it is proposed that the implementation of the plan and policies comes into effect from the 1st of July 2021. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Whiteside. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification? Okay, do I have a mover for this report? Councillor Lancashire?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I move the recommendation in the notice papers.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this report? Councillor Allen, thank you. Councillor Lancashire, would you like to speak to this report?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, to thank the councillor, Neil Whiteside, the director of infrastructure and all the staff involved in what was a massive exercise, a massive body of work to go through. Right from the very start of this council, four years ago, we were all quite concerned about the parking issues across the municipality and in our shopping centres and of course, the impact on the adjoining residential areas. And this was very much a series of complex issues to deal with. And we've certainly been waiting for this. The officers have worked through a massive amount of street by street information and come up with this strategy. The, the number of submissions involved indicated also that there was a great deal of community interest, which didn't, wouldn't surprise any of us. So it is, I think, a great thing to be handing on to the next council, this policy to proceed forward. And I also appreciate that right at the moment with COVID, that there is just yet again, another complication. And as we pull out of that, many of these issues are going to resurface again. So regardless of that sort of complication, well done to the staff who have worked on this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Councillor Allen, would you like to say a few words on this?
Just to thank the submitters and the council officers for their participation and their work in this report.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Any other comments from councillors? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against Carrie. Thank you. Thank you for your work, Mr Whiteside on that. Thank you. Okay, councillors, 12.19 to 12.26 are all contracts. Do I have a councillor that would like to move that as a block, please? Councillor Goodrich?
Madam Mayor, we just need to, to look at councillor Pham returning.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Welcome back councillor Pham. Please identify yourself.
Councillor Yuen and Pham.
Thank you. Yep, wonderful. Thank you. Okay, councillor Goodrich?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move 12.19 to 12.26 as a block as they are all contracts. Thank you. And as printed in the business papers.
Thank you for that. Do I have a second of councillor David? Thank you. All right, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against Carrie. Thank you. Okay, councillors. It's 10:35. Okay. Okay, that's the end of our reports. Okay, next we got our notices of motion. The first one, 13.1, Protection and Management of Brimbank's Grassland Ecosystems. Councillor Borg, I believe you have put this forward?
Correct, Madam Mayor. I would like to move the motion as per business papers.
Thank you. Do I have a second for this notice of motion? Councillor Hidditch? Okay, councillor Borg, over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Brimbank municipality rise within the Victorian volcanic plains, a vast area once covered in highly productive grasslands that are now regrettably listed as critically endangered under federal legislation. Indeed, Brimbank proudly supports some of the last urban populations of grassland endangered species and communities. Brimbank residents recognise and value of remaining wild spaces and areas where they can connect with nature. The social and health benefits of natural assets are recognised as significantly contributing to the health and wellbeing of our communities. Retention of these natural assets, whatever the size, is important for local accessibility to nature within the suburbs. Brimbank considers that a healthy and sustainable natural environment to be a vital part of its urban metrics. Through the Brimbank Biodiversity Strategy, council has set a vision to protect existing biodiversity and increase the diversity and sustainability of fauna, habitat and remnant vegetation. This vision is reinforced and strengthened through the Brimbank Climate Emergency Plan, which highlights the need for action at scale and speed to protect our unique flora and fauna. Through the Transforming Brimbank Environmental Equity Agenda, disproportionate impacts to our community and the natural environment have been raised and the commitment towards restoring our natural environment established. Threats to our endangered flora and fauna are many and include climate change, introduced pests such as rabbits, foxes and weeds and both unpermitted and permitted vegetation clearance through land development. A Vago report released in June 2020 highlighted the failings of the Victorian Government in establishing two grassland reserves to offset native vegetation and habitat lost to development in Melbourne. Further, the independent review of the federal EPBC Act, of which council provided the submission, has highlighted continued failings in the management and protection of our biodiversity. Brimbank's recent submission to the Victorian Parliamentary Inquiry into ecosystem decline outlines council's concern over threats to ecosystems, both within the municipality and across the state. A responsible approach to the protection and management of biodiversity, including Grecy ecosystems in Melbourne's west, is urgently required. Within Brimbank and across Victoria, this approach must include strict adherence to the State 2017 permitted clearance regulations, including the requirement to demonstrate etiquette avoidance and minimisation as a first step for all development proposals and to ensure land subject to development is surveyed according to the endorsed survey guidelines for both flora and fauna prior to any decision made on development impacts. This notice of motion aligns with Brimbank's important advocacy work outlined in Transforming Brimbank Environmental Equity Agenda, the Brimbank Biodiversity Strategy and the Connectivity Plan. I would like to take this opportunity, Madam Mayor, to thank the Friends of Corroite Creek, Friends of Still Creek, Friends of the Merribinong Valley Incorporated and Friends of Iramu and the Kelly Conservative Preserves Committee of Management. and the Kelly Conservative Preservatives, Preserves Committee of Management. In particular, Dr Megan O'Shea, who brought to my attention a proposal for a residential...
30 seconds, councillor Borg?
Albin Vale and her concerns regarding the potential loss of grassland and endangered species in this issue. I call upon my fellow councillors to support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillor Headitch? Would you like to say a few words on this?
I would. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to support everything that councillor Borg said. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other councillors that would like to make a comment? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carrie, thank you councillor Borg for bringing that to our attention. Thank you. All right, 13.2 Calder Freeway, Calder Park Drive interchange, Calder Park Drive level crossing removal and New Calder Park Station. This is a notice of motion that's been put forward by councillor Lancashire. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I could move the recommendation that's up in front of us?
Yep, okay, do I have a second? Councillor Goodie? Okay, councillor Lancashire? Over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council has advocated and continues to advocate for both federal and state government to fully fund a range of interrelated transport projects along Calder Park Drive between Melton Highway and the Calder Freeway. These projects are summarised as upgrade of the existing Calder Park Drive interchange with Calder Freeway to a full diamond interchange, removal of the level crossing at Calder Park Drive and duplication of the Calder Park Drive and the declaration of the road, together with Westwood Drive, Robinsons Road and Palmer's Road collectively referred to as the Palmer's Road Corridor. In addition, the West Growth Corridor Plan, prepared by the state government to identify infrastructure and land use requirements associated with the most recent expansion of Melbourne's urban growth boundary, outlines the need for a future station at Calder Park. If delivered, this station would have the potential to operate as a regional park and ride facility and alleviate existing demand for car parking currently experienced at Water Gardens Station. Collectively, the above projects have the potential to provide a broad range of transport and mobility improvements for Brimbank and the Western Metropolitan Region. The, given the regional importance of these projects, it is also proposed to seek support from Melton City Council in order to build support and increase chances of their delivery. The upgrade of the Calder Park Drive interchange with Calder Freeway and the removal of the level crossing are identified in council's current transport priorities paper, as it is the upgrade of the Palmer's Road Corridor, including Calder Park Drive. While not explicitly identifying the future Calder Park Station, council's car parking strategy discusses car parking at railway stations in detail and advocates for park and ride facilities to be located on marginal land away from higher order land uses such as activity centres. The provision of a park and ride facility at a future Calder Park Station would be in accordance with this strategy. Furthermore, the upgrade of Calder Park Drive, including the duplication of the road, the removal of the level crossing and the upgrade of the intersection with Calder Freeway and the immediate construction of a station at Calder Park, has already been identified as an advocacy priority for Melton City Council in order to accommodate its rapidly growing population. I recommend this notice motion to council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Lancashire. Councillor Goodie?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I do support the the notice of motion from councillor Lancashire. It is a very important one and I remember and councillor Taylor would remember that in 2007, when I was the mayor, I led a delegation to Canberra to speak to the then Federal Minister for Roads, asking that the Calder Freeway, the Calder Park Interchange be done, that the Sunshine Avenue Interchange be done and the King's Road Interchange be done. Subsequent to that, the King's Road Interchange was then announced in the budget. We're still waiting on Calder Park and we're still waiting on Sunshine Avenue. So it's been a long time coming and I know that councils every year have been asking and asking and asking that this be done. It is a very, very important piece of road. The development, of course, in 2007 wasn't as great as it is now residentially. There are a lot more homes now. The amenity, of course, with the road being closed to go into the freeway is also very difficult at the moment too. So it's a bit of a dangerous spot. So I definitely support councillor Lancashire's notice of motion and of course endorse that. We ask also Melton Council to come on board with us on that on that infrastructure as well. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other councillors that would like to speak to this notice of motion? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carrie. And councillor Lancashire, thank you for bringing this up again. It's it's been a long awaiting project or projects, I should say. Thank you. 13.3 Update on the Deer Park Rail Corridor Level Crossing Removal Projects. This is a notice of motion that's been put forward by councillor Headitch. Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this one's self explanatory, looking for updates on the Deer Park Rail Corridor Level Crossing Removal Projects. We all know the campaign that went on previously that was successful and the government, the state government has come forward with the three level crossings along the corridor. Currently, two of them are out to community consultation, Robinsons Road and Fitzjor Road, and there is a lot of community feedback coming in, a lot of feedback about the concept plans and the fast tracking of the projects and various various matters that...
Councillor Headitch, you're just...
Sorry, move the motion as per the papers.
Yes.
Sorry.
I know, it's late. Councillor, do I have a second, please? Councillor Borg? Okay. Councillor Headitch, okay.
I think people understand where I got to and that we're looking to receive a report and a briefing from the Level Crossing Authority on what are the key emerging issues that are coming out of the consultations. We know that there are some significant ones and we know that there are some conversations about what's best, what's best practice and what needs to happen next that council needs to be involved in. So that is part A of the motion. Part B is that council receives a further briefing and report from council itself on the negotiating position being adopted by council on behalf of residents in negotiations with the state government and the authority on matters associated with the project of Fitzjor Road, such as I've got 474 to be 274 Forest Street site. The Fitzjor Road realignment, an underpass option. We have an overpass, which is basically going through the middle of this 274 Forest Street site, which is an open space biodiversity linking at the RDI wetlands and one that's valued hardly, highly by a large number of residents from West Sunshine and from RDI. We have problems with boundaries. We have one boundary being the member for Footscray and one on the other side of the boundary, the members of St Albans looking after the RDI residents. We have all sorts of options, all sorts of issues that need discussing about how residents do advocate for things with them and so on. But we have mainly a lot of transport matters. There are conversations about moving the Fitzjor Road to the east a little bit to allow for undergrounding, if that's an option. They talk about all those sort of things with the council and get a briefing from the council offices and all that, but more importantly, on all the environmental issues and noise and various other issues that are coming forward out of this consultation process. Where do we stand? Where do communities stand on this? How do we determine the priorities for 274 Forest Street? Is it for a bike track, a bike facility? Is it for open space? What is it? And none of that's clear at the moment. So lots of conflicts and lots of issues. So conversation, the best way to resolve, that's what the motion's all about, put it to to councillors on that basis. But C is really also about making sure that community and residents affected are provided with regular and timely information from council and various other parties. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Headitch. Councillor Borg, would you like to say a few words on this?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, I think councillor Headitch covered it very well. Just simply want to say that this is a matter that is causing a lot of anxiety and concerns among members amongst members of the community. And as such, it's important that council considers these concerns and take appropriate action. A report and a briefing from the Level Crossing Authority would be appropriate, so is the request to have a further briefing and report from council on the negotiating position being adopted by council with regards to the matter in question. And of course, it's also important to keep the community informed. I would like to thank councillor Headitch for moving this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Are there any other speakers for this notice motion? Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I know I'm conscious of time. It was always a wishful thinking, Madam Mayor, to have the the level crossing underground. It's no doubt about it that that was the first option by all concern. And to me, looking at the new plans, I think it might cost them a lot more money to put in reference to the level crossing there than having to go underground. This is my opinion. But again, thank you to councillor Headitch for bringing this up. And indeed, the community is adamant that they want some change, probably seen in the plans. And as soon as possible, I hope. Yeah.
Thank you, councillor David. Any other speakers for this item? Okay, I'll put it to a vote. All those in favour? Against? Carrie. Okay, councillors, we won't be able to complete the agenda tonight. I am adjourning this meeting to tomorrow at 2pm. It'd be great if you can all make it so we can finish the rest of the agenda. Any questions on that? Okay.
What time, Madam Mayor?
At 2 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you all for attending and for your interest in tonight's meeting. I declare this meeting close at 10:53pm. I instruct the host to stop recording of this meeting. Thank you. See you tomorrow.